Good morning, everyone. I'd like to call to order the September 25th, 2024 Meeting of the Monterey County Planning Commissioner. I'd like to ask Commissioner Getzelman to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Commissioner Getzelman?
Here.
Commissioner Work?
Here.
Commissioner Gonzalez?
Here.
Commissioner Mendoza?
Here.
Commissioner Deal?
Here.
Commissioner Monsalve?
Here.
Commissioner Roberts?
Here.
Commissioner Daniels?
Here.
Commissioner Shaw and Gomez are absent. Chair, you have a quorum.
Thank you, ma'am. Madam Secretary, would you provide the instructions for participation online at this point? Make sure everybody can join us if they wish.
Yes, thank you. If you are joining through either the Zoom web link or via phone, we'd like to note that in order to participate during public comment on the Zoom platform, you can raise your hand by opening the reactions button at the bottom of your screen and clicking the raise hand icon. On a mobile or landline phone, you can raise and lower your hand by pressing star nine. Another way to participate during the hearing is by sending an email to PCHearingComments@co.monterey.ca.us. This email address is also on today's agenda. We do monitor the email address during the hearing, but once the hearing or now the hearing has started, we cannot guarantee that we will capture and that we'll be able to get all public comments through there. In addition, if you wish to make a comment, you will be at that time granted permission by the clerk to unmute yourself during the public comments section. On the Zoom platform, you need to accept, and then you will be able to unmute using the mute/unmute button, which is a microphone at the bottom of your screen. Via phone, you can mute and unmute by pressing star six. Thank you for joining us.
Thank you. This is a time that set aside in our meeting for public comments on items that are not on today's agenda but that are under the jurisdiction of the Planning Commission. Is there anybody in the chambers that would like to do that? They have three minutes, if so. I don't see anyone coming forward. Unless Ms. Jensen is. No, she's not. She was going, in fact, backwards. That being the case, Madam Clerk, is there anyone online who would like to do this?
No, there are no hands up on Zoom and no additional emails.
Very well, then. I'm going to go ahead and close that portion of the program and bring it back to the clerk to ask for additions, deletions, and corrections to today's agenda. Madam Clerk?
For the record, we received and distributed additional correspondence for Agenda Item Number Four, PLN 230127 McDougall, and Agenda Item Number Five, REF 240016 Coastal Zone Updates, ADU and Junior ADU Regulations.
Very well, thank you. And for those of you in the chambers, copies of those would be over to my right on the front with the other materials for the meeting, in case you wish to see them. Okay, now we're all the way up to referrals, Planning Commission referrals. I'm going to ask Madam Secretary, would you like to speak to that at all?
Yeah, I think briefly, I just wanted to alert the commission to a couple of matters. We have a couple of referrals that you'll be receiving today. The Paharo and Community Plan updates, along with development evaluation, is on your consent calendar. And then your referral for wildfire rebuild is actually a presented item on today's scheduled matters. I did also want to alert that there are two items that staff is proposing to go ahead and close out and deem complete. One is referral 23.2, requesting the TMC provided presentation for Highway 68. That presentation had been provided. And then also referral 24.4, which was regular updates regarding the Pebble Beach Equestrian Center historic review. That item too has come to closure and is proposed to be complete. Aside from that, staff's available if you have any other questions or comments or wish to add any or clarify any other referrals.
Pellet Commissioners, anything? Is there anybody in the public that would like to talk about these referrals? I don't see anybody in the chambers. Is there anybody online, Madam Clerk?
No.
All right. Well, thank you, Ms. Ready. I know I appreciate keeping these referrals current and on the forefront so that we know what we've asked for. I'm going to go ahead and close that section of the program and come back to the consent agenda, which contains the referral I think we just talked about, but I'm not aware of anything else. Am I missing anything else that's on that consent agenda? And I would actually like to pull this off briefly and just say a few words if I could. And I would do that and take that matter up right now if, because that leaves nothing on the consent agenda, so there's no reason to act on the consent agenda. When I pull this item number two referral off to comment on the development evaluation, because I cannot miss an opportunity to comment on the development evaluation system requirement. I say this into the, into space because it doesn't seem to make any difference, but I can't help myself from my involvement with development of the 2010 general plan. The development evaluation system was one of the keystones of the planning effort that went into that plan to develop and maintain a vision for our county that involves centralizing our growth and resources around those areas where development is already occurring, like our community centers and our, or community areas and rural centers. It was supposed to make it, it was supposed to disincentivize developing in areas that were far away from those kinds of spots. So we end up not supporting widespread development and use all our resources as efficiently we can to provide housing, to provide infrastructure and safety to the folks that are going to be living in our community now and in the future. That was 2010. It's now 2024. The development evaluation has, system has never been adopted and has never taken its place in this. And so for going on 14 years, our general plan has been unable to operate to implement the vision of this county that the people selected when they adopted that plan. I just got to say it's past time. And the clarity that would be provided by that system would, in my view, simplify and streamline processing for a large number of projects. If people knew where things were going to be allowed, if people knew where things were going to be encouraged, if people knew where things were going to be prohibited, then their time in processing would be much less, the cost in processing would be much less, our entire permit streaming would be better. So the fact that we haven't been able to develop this in 14 years troubles me greatly, and I'll continue to pontificate on that at every available opportunity in the vain hope that somebody will realize that politically difficult as it is, it needs to be done. And I don't think I need to tell our planners that, but if there's anybody in the world who is a decision maker, I'd like them to hear that. Anybody else want to comment on the referral, on the referral report that we just received? Commissioner Daniels?
Thank you. I'm wondering if staff, you could just share with the rest of us. I know that we've seen the development evaluation system several times, and I think the board has as well. There's been some movement. What is the delay? And just so we can be clear about where exactly we're at.
Yeah, speaking generally, the last time that development evaluation system was active was, I believe, two years ago, approximately. And it had gone before the Board of Supervisors. The board had had suggestions and comments. And, and subsequent to that, there were just other priorities and other matters that took precedence and priority. And so it wasn't something that staff was able to respond to the board readily and get back to them. Subsequently, there have been a number of moving parts, in particular with regards to housing, with regards to the potential impact of DES on affordable housing, changing state law, where staff felt just, there's a little more complications to the DES. And so it's on our list. It is still a top priority. But to bring back up and revisit in the context of all of those things, however, at this time, we really just don't have the staff capacity, given the other priorities that the board has concurred with and that we have moving right now. So I, that is not as, I'm sure, as detailed and satisfactory. It is one of the sort of next up to be assigned priorities as capacity, as we have capacity in this coming year. The reality, I don't know if staffing wise and the way other projects are taking more time than, than we had budgeted for, if we'll actually get to picking it up this fiscal year before we come back for our April update or by June.
And then just to follow up, because somebody asked me this question yesterday, which I know will be a terrifying question, but somebody asked, when does the general plan get updated again? Is there a regular cycle, a best practices? I mean, we haven't implemented 2010 is the, is the gist of this conversation. And so completely, what, what does that look like for the county?
Yeah, generally speaking, 20 to 30-year time horizon is the target for general plans. At this time, at least in the foreseeable five-year work program, we don't intend to do a comprehensive update, as we are still trying to implement our 2010 general plan. And then a reminder in the coastal zone, we still have a referral we'll come back and formally respond to. But the, the intention too is we still have the 1982 general plan and portions of it that still need to be brought up to current in the coastal zone. So, yeah, so that is the general timeframe, but it's not in our sort of near term, you know, 20 years would be the 2030 horizon. And I would imagine over the next five to eight years, we would kind of start having the conversation of where are we for implementing the 2010 general plan and where are we for contemplating if, if or how we might do a next comprehensive update.
Thank you. And thank you, Chair Deal, for keeping this conversation alive and as a referral.
Thank you. It's a kind of a lost cause thing, but I'm, I'm still into it. And I'd like to clarify that referral to say that I'd like continuing updates on the development evaluation system, preferably every quarter, with a list of any projects that would have used it if it were in place. In other words, anything we're trying to apply it to, that we didn't have it to apply to, that would be really important to me, because I think part of the issue is that policy is kind of nebulous, but projects are really concrete. People don't see the need unless there's a connection to a particular project that they care about. So barring any objection, I'd like to add that clarification for that referral and a regular periodicity to it. Anybody in the public want to comment on anything that's in the referrals? No. Anything in the public online, Madam Clerk?
No, and we have no additional emails.
Thank you, ma'am. That being the case, unless commissioners have additional comments, I'm going to go ahead and close out that item and move along to our scheduled matters. The first of which is item number three, REF 240002, the County of Monterey discussing rebuilding of properties affected by fires, which is continued from April 24. The project location is listed as the Big Sur Land use plan, although that wasn't, in fact, the entire area covered by this. But I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to staff and Ms. Escobar. Are you going to make a guest appearance today? Oh, Ms. Gonzalez?
Sorry. It was under, the previous item was under approval of consent calendar. So we don't have to, and that's a question because I don't know, do we need to approve the previous item if it was under approval of consent calendar and was pulled out?
I was thinking that we received an update. I didn't know if we had to take action. Ms. Donlin, you want to correct us about that?
I don't think you need to make a motion. I think everyone heard it. It's in the record. You've received the update and given direction, so you're good.
Thank you.
Appreciate, Commissioner, because if we had to adopt something, that would have been very important. Okay, back to this rebuild of properties affected by wildfires. Staff, want to take that away?
Yes. Good morning, Chair Deal and Planning Commissioners. Elizabeth Gonzalez, project planner for REF 240002. On April 24th, 2024, staff presented a report on properties affected by wildfires from 2015 to current. Although the Planning Commission appreciated all the work that had been done to recover from the 2020 fires, the Planning Commission was still concerned for the property owners affected by the Pfeiffer Fire and Sobranas Chimney Fires. For each fire, the Board of Supervisors had adopted a resolution for fire recovery, which specified criteria intended to reduce hurdles to rebuilding. Each resolution varies slightly, but the criteria contained in the resolutions and the process for rebuilding after a fire are discussed in more detail in each report. This includes timeframes for property owners to submit rebuild applications to housing and community development. Those reports were attached as Exhibit A. The fire recovery guidelines for the 2020 River Carmel and Dolan Fires have a 10-year timeframe not to exceed September 15th, 2030. The fire recovery guidelines for the 2016 Sobranas Chimney Fires have a 10-year timeframe not to exceed August 31st, 2026. The fire recovery guidelines for the 2013 Pfeiffer Fire had a three-year timeframe not to exceed December 23rd, 2016. Given that we know it takes more than three years to help a property owner recover, staff could potentially go back to the Board of Supervisors and request an extension of this resolution. The Planning Commission had requested to see maps of the 2013 and 2016 fire areas. Unfortunately, staff was unable to obtain the actual maps that were used for these fires, but staff was able to find some maps to be able to provide context to these locations. These, these are the 2020 River Carmel and Dolan Fires. The river fire is up here, and this was the Carmel Fire. The Dolan Fire was located down here. Down below, this map shows the Dolan Fire and the location of where the fire was. This is a map of the 2016 Sobranas Fire. Down below, it shows where the, the location of the fire. And up here, most of the fire was located in the Polo, Colorado area, down towards Pico Blanco and the Big Sur River. Staff was able to obtain this for the fire Pfeiffer, Pfeiffer Fire, excuse me. Most of the fire was located within the Pfeiffer Ridge Road. There are many factors or hurdles to reconstruction of building after a fire. The Planning Commission wanted to better understand these barriers to rebuilding, specifically replacement of septic systems. When do they have to be replaced? County road access, specifically Polo, Colorado Road, and provisions to reside in a trailer during construction. Today with me from Environmental Health Bureau, I have Nicole Fowler, supervising environmental health specialist, to further discuss the septic system issues.
Welcome.
Thank you. Ultimately, the, the policies that were adopted by the Board of Supervisors allow reconstruction of the homes that were destroyed, or any dwelling that was destroyed, to, to utilize a septic system that meets the same standards that were in place at the time the structure was built. If a septic system was in good use or good condition, it didn't get damaged by heavy vehicular traffic, or pipes didn't get melted during the response to the fire, that would allow it to be retained and utilized. The Health Department was requiring and does still continue to require a performance evaluation of the septic system to demonstrate the structural integrity of the tank and the dispersal field's ability to accept the hydraulic load from the system. That's essentially the, the long and short. That's essentially the long and short of the septic systems, that if that septic system failed to pass the performance evaluation and the, I think this is an important clarification, that that structure was legally established with permits. It would be allowed to construct a replacement septic system based on the standards that were in place at the time that structure was built. As many of you are aware, in 2018, Monterey County adopted a new set of septic system criteria that certainly required more extensive site evaluation and installation of systems that are more protective of groundwater and surface water and the environment. And so many of the properties in these fire impacted areas are constrained by trees, by slopes, by other things that make siding a conventional septic system challenging. To the extent it's practical and would not produce an impact to, again, groundwater or surface water, then that conventional system would still be allowed to be installed today for previously reconstruction of previously permitted structures.
Thank you, Nikki.
May I ask a question there? Ms. Fowler, a couple of things. Number one, what is the, is there a difference between how an unpermitted structure, residential structure, or a legal non-conforming residential structure would be considered in this scenario?
If it is legal non-conforming and in good standing with the Planning and Building Department, then the Health Department would absolutely allow that reconstruction as I described.
And who would determine whether it was legal non-conforming or unpermitted?
That would be a Building Department determination.
Right, thank you. The second question is, are there alternative wastewater disposal systems that would be usable or appropriate for any of these kinds of situations that these people are able to consider?
Alternative wastewater systems can pretty much be engineered for any scenario. They, the more complex, the more complicated, the more expensive they get. So when a conventional gravity leach field is possible, we're going to try and pursue that and have that installed. It requires less ongoing operation and maintenance and are generally cheaper or more inexpensive to construct at the outset. But generally speaking, we, there are systems that are going to work in almost all site situations. Our local agency management program for onsite wastewater systems and our local code does allow a provision for existing structures that are developed under permit if they had a failure and there was just no means of constructing a septic system that wouldn't, that would damage the environment or groundwater. I think I said that a little backwards, but if it wasn't possible, then there is a provision that would allow a hollowway system only for existing permitted structures when there's no other option. So we would first go to, well, maybe you can install half of a conforming system, something to kind of, you know, get you by, keep you in the house without having to rely on a hollowway system. Ultimately, the hauling of sewage is expensive. We're talking hundreds of dollars per pump out. And so to have to live in a structure and have to rely on that weekly pumping or even bi-weekly pumping, it's quite expensive. And so our goal is always to find a solution that would be for onsite disposal.
I've had inquiries about the addition, the use of composting toilets, which some of our area residents are very interested in using as they can provide a way to dispose of the waste without having to have it hauled out. What is the Health Department's discussion of that?
Composting toilets are currently not considered a viable alternative to an onsite wastewater treatment system or septic system, but they certainly could be used in tandem with one. So our codes require either a connection to a functioning septic system or a sewer system. But if a property owner wanted to electively pursue a composting toilet for their own, you know, their own reasons, that they would be able to obtain that through the Building Department with a plumbing permit.
So are those codes things that can't be changed locally? Are they state law or are they local regulations?
The composting toilet is, as far as I know, not permissible through the California Plumbing Code. Anecdotally, I have always received information from other environmental health bureaus throughout the county that composting toilets require a lot of maintenance. They can be time intensive. And if somebody is not managing them properly, then they can cause contamination issues or it's just not fully degrading the waste. And so ultimately, there's always been a reluctance to say that they are a, they're not a passive system. A septic system is meant to kind of flush it and forget it. Same thing with the sewer system versus a composting toilet. It's very much active and requires a high degree of operation and maintenance. So ultimately, Madam Chair, your question was, is this a state law? And I do believe this is prohibited by the Plumbing Code, which specifies all structures need to have a connection to either a septic or a sewer system.
And by septic system, that would include alternative wastewater treatment systems?
Correct.
Okay. Anybody else want to, before Ms. Fowler steps away, we go back to Ms. Gonzalez? Appreciate that. Oh, I did have one more question. What is it usual, what's the procedure and what would you estimate the cost to be to prove that you can't have a conventional septic system? And how would you, what's the investment to say, no, I can't do this. Now I have to do something else?
It would be difficult to put a price tag on it. I would say that ultimately, it's the same site evaluation that you would do to demonstrate it. So it consists of a deep groundwater monitoring boring to 15 to 20 foot deep and several percolation test holes or a backhoe testing in the area to classify the site soils. And so the cost of that, I think, can range, depending on the company that you're utilizing and the site conditions, to get the equipment onto the site and to conduct the work. So it's not hundreds of dollars. It would be in the thousands of dollars range, I would say.
I think the last time I had to do it, it ran about $10,000, which is one of the things I want to highlight for a barrier to redevelopment. If there's a way we can take a look at any of those kinds of things, I'd very much appreciate it. All right, I'm done with that. Anybody else? No? Ms. Gonzalez?
Thank you. Now we have Public Works, and I believe Enrique Sovedra is on Zoom, Chief of Public Works.
He'll need to be promoted as a panelist.
Stand by, Mr. Sovedra, where I think we're working on it. Okay.
Good morning, Commissioner. I'm Adam Chair, Enrique Sovedra, Public Works Facilities and Parks. And I'm just here to give you a big background on Palo Colorado Road. Just as background, as Liz mentioned earlier in the presentation, the 2016 Sobranas Fire was a pretty big fire that included large portions of the area around the Big Sur Coast. And Palo Colorado is a road that was within the burn scar of the Sobranas Fire. And the burn scar, which by its nature, can be very devastating for a road. Not only does it impact the actual road structure, but it also has less than impacts since it burns a lot of the vegetation. So in the winters that follow a big fire like the Sobranas Fire, you get a lot of erosion, a lot of our culverts, our drainage facilities get impacted for winters to come following a big fire. And unfortunately for us, we had 2017 winter storms, which were a national FEMA declared disaster. And we experienced heavy rains following the Sobranas Fire. So as you can imagine, Palo Colorado was very much impacted by those rains. And it's a road that we worked through the following summers and years trying to get it passable because a number of folks live up in that area of Palo Colorado Canyon, and they need access for their homes and whatnot. So, long story short, we worked tirelessly following the 2017 winter storms to get a large portion of the road open. And I would say now that a majority of the road is open. However, there's still a piece on the upper Palo Colorado that remains closed to the public. And that's because there's still a piece that remains damaged from those 2016 Sobranas Fire and the resulting, in the following winters. We have a project currently underway to fix the upper piece of the roadway. It is taking a little bit longer for a number of reasons. One of them was just trying to get to the upper piece because we had to fix the bottom half first. The other reason is that it's much more expensive, the upper half, because the topography is much more challenging and there's a lot more things to consider in the design. But nevertheless, we're continuing on that process to develop the final plans. We're currently at a 65% level on the plans. In parallel to the plans, we're also working with the realtor agencies to obtain permits. Not that we have completed our CEQA for the project, and we're working with FEMA to get the, we call the equivalent of CEQA on the federal cycle NIPA approved. And then another parallel track is also the funding. We, our department has gone ahead and funded the design and environmental face of this project with our current departmental funding to keep it moving. However, there's a shortfall for the construction. We estimate the construction to be in order of $50 million, of which we're short about $11 million. So it's quite a big number that we need to overcome to fund the construction.
Pardon me, was that 1-5 or 5-0?
15, 1-5.
Thank you, I'm glad to hear that.
Yeah, 15, sorry. And we're short about $11 million of that 15. And we're looking at grants, we're applying, we're actively looking for grant funding or other sources of funding to fund that construction gap. So that's where we're at on the project. Again, we're proceeding forward with design and permits, like if we had the construction funding, in hope that by the time we're ready, we'll have the construction funding for that project. That's the end of my presentation. Is there any questions of the Commission?
Thank you, Mr. Sovedra. I think Commissioner Daniels has a question?
Yes, thank you, through the chair. And thank you, Mr. Sovedra. I'm curious to know, because there was a declared emergency, what portion, if any, of that 15 million is reimbursable by FEMA?
Good question. So from the 2017 winter storms that we had experienced in Monterey County, we worked with FEMA to get as much of the project that was, I guess, damaged or caused by the damage that storm into the FEMA process for reimbursement. We estimate that the cost of that, it would be, I think we're looking at about $2 to $3 million of eligible reimbursements for that portion. And the reason it's not the whole amount or a larger portion of the amount is because FEMA only paid for what would consider deeper removal or damages that were actually directly related to that winter event in 2017. What's happened since 2017 is we've had other winters and other, you know, damage sort of added on to the 2017 winter damages. And so that's why the number or the cost grew from that initial estimate that we provided FEMA back in 2017. So to answer your question, it's about $2 to $3 million that we're looking to get reimbursed from FEMA for this project.
And one more question to follow up through the chair is, the damage that is in that upper region of Palo Colorado Road, is it one big washout, is it multiple washouts? What is the extent of the damage in terms of what needs to be repaired?
It's multiple, it's multiple locations. And the multiple washouts where we have the road that slipped, went down the hillside or part of the upper hillside came down onto the road. So it's multiple locations. I think we're looking at a total of 63 locations in that three and a half miles that we need to address.
Does that answer your question, Commissioner?
That is very shocking. And just for our colleagues on the dais, I know that there are residents who live up there who have been, then that means dealing with 63 washouts since 2017.
Yes, Mr. Sovedra, there is some access available to residents. Could you describe what that's like?
So the road is closed at roughly what we call the Botcher's Gap. I mean, not Botcher's Gap, the hoist. It's kind of the, past the fire station, there's actual gate across the road. Beyond, and beyond there, that's where I guess several homes are and people will need to cross that gate through. There's a combination lock on the gate that allows only the residents to go through because of the road condition. And then they have to either walk to their vehicle that are parked by the gate or if they have one of these, I guess, altering vehicles to get to the car. That's how they come down the roadway from the upper reaches of Palo Colorado. Because again, the road has washed out, so it doesn't really allow for safe access through regular vehicular traffic.
So would it be fair to say that any efforts towards beginning rebuilding would be precluded by the road condition?
If it involved bringing in heavy material, I mean, heavy trucks to, for building materials, I would say to be limited, yes. Certainly, you couldn't get a cement mixer up there. Certainly, you couldn't get any large delivery vehicles or trucks up there.
Drilling rigs is what we're talking about for septic, I think, in the short term. And when would you say that full access was returned to the areas of Palo Colorado Road prior to the hoist? All the public roads?
Yes, yes, it's a good question. So one, another big washout we had following the 2017 winter storms was at the, where Rocky Creek crosses Palo Colorado. It's roughly about three and a half miles up from Highway 1. And that was a huge washout and also a project that we worked on with FEMA for reimbursement. In the end, that project was about $5.3 million, of which we got reimbursed $5 million from FEMA. We completed that project in, the noise completion was filed in February of 2020. So roughly four years ago.
Thank you. Any further questions, anybody? I really appreciate that and I'm so glad you could join us this morning and help us understand.
My pleasure.
Let's see, any further questions from the Commission? Stick around in case Public has something to say. Ms. Gonzalez?
Thank you. And the Planning Commission also wanted to know a little more about temporary residences. There are currently provisions in Monterey County that allow temporary residences during construction of a main dwelling subject to a discretionary permit. However, for those affected by the fires, temporary residences, such as RVs, mobile homes, travel trailers, were not only exempt from the discretionary permit, but they were allowed to be brought onto the property once they were cleared by Cal OES and obtaining a building permit. Environmental health would have had to make sure that they had serviceable portable toilets or if they were able to, connect to existing septic systems. These temporary living units would be allowed onto the properties until final construction of the permanent structure.
Thank you. Anybody want to comment on that? Again, the more barriers we have at the get-go, the less useful these provisions are, as I'm sure you're well aware. Further?
Okay, thank you. Therefore, staff recommends that the Planning Commission receive this report from the Housing Community Development, Environmental Health Bureau and Public Works regarding the hurdles to rebuilding properties affected by the fires. And this concludes Staff's presentation.
Excellent, I'm so appreciative of the energy spent on this. I want to go back myself to follow up with Ms. Fowler. And I note I didn't ask for a discussion of water, of portable water. Would you give us a quick rundown of what would be required to reoccupy a site with that in mind?
In this instance, we would allow a temporary tank with hauled water. That isn't something that would be allowed for permanent residency to establish a rebuilt permanent dwelling, but certainly we would allow that for this temporary residence.
If I could interject, would point of use, point of entry also be an option in that instance?
If the, it very well could. Ultimately, that is more of like a long-term solution, that's something that could work for a private water source, if it was a private well. A lot of times what we were seeing during these, the water lines were, you know, strewn across multiple properties and they would be melted during the fire. And so those all needed to be replaced before that that water system was viable. So there wasn't an active water source on some of these properties. And so those are the instances that we would be amenable to the use of a, like, Baker tank and hauled water for, on a temporary basis. If somebody had an active well on their property or a connection to a water system that still had power, the pipes presumably, you know, weren't melted to the point of not allowing water to pass through them. We were asking for a passing bacteriological test to confirm that it wasn't contaminated and that, we would also look at VOCs, volatile organic compounds, due to the fact that PVC piping, when exposed to high temperatures, can leach into the water supply and can, or cause leaching into the water supply long-term. And so if that was the case, we would require the bottled water or the hauled water instead of using that onsite source.
Thank you. And I just want to editorialize, I'm not aware of any public waters in this area at all. I think it's all private and much of it is ad hoc. So following up on that, given the requirements of water and wastewater disposal, the provision of the ability to have a trailer or a temporary dwelling would only occur after you have a building permit and after you have some accommodation for both water and wastewater. Is that right? So you have to have a building permit before you can actually reoccupy the property?
The building permit is basically for routing to environmental health to make sure that they do have the necessary connections. It's all about health and safety and so being able to monitor those temporary structures through the construction permit was what we thought necessary.
So there's no way for people to have a temporary structure while they're figuring out what to do, is what I'm saying. You have to have already figured out what you do to the ability to get a building permit prior to being able to temporarily, you know, occupy your property. So basically you're saying it's safer for people to be unhoused than it is for them to have a trailer or something on their property while they're trying to figure out what's going on after a fire. Is that clear?
Yeah. Through the chair, I also, I neglected to mention that I don't, I believe debris removal would need to be completed before a temporary trailer would be allowed to be brought onsite because we would want to make sure that the potentially contaminated debris was all cleared off. And so that does require a demolition permit for that waste disposal and clearing of the old house. And so I think that's, that's where that construction permit came in as well. The demo permit and the construction permit kind of like piggybacked on one another where the site was deemed to be safe in terms of removal of hazardous materials and then the construction trailer could be brought on at that time.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Commissioner Gonzalez?
And how would they remove the hazardous material if the road is closed? At least that's what I understood, if the road is closed going up or coming down and they have to remove that material, I guess you're stuck. Anyways, I don't know what the answer to that is.
A lot of folks did it by hand. Yes, Ms. Fowler?
Through the chair, that's a reasonable question. And for the most recent fire, Cal Recycle came in as a state agency and organized the debris removal for all of the property owners that were willing to opt-in to the service. And so there was, I think, coordination between our local public works and the state agencies to come in and do that debris removal. That process took some time, they had to get access to all their properties. It moved at the pace of government and it took a little while. And those owners that chose to try and be more proactive could submit a work plan to the Environmental Health Bureau to clear the site and then do their own soil monitoring to make sure that the site had been cleared satisfactorily. And again, if there was a road closure, I'm not sure the logistics that would have been coordinated through Public Works. It's a good question.
Fire Department brought it out in small vehicles. And one of the things that they also had available, and I do always like to highlight it, is a volunteer effort by, they're called the Christian Brotherhood, that came in from out of state. And they do this, they provide some people power for these kinds of things and it's always much appreciated. Commissioner Monsalve?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm just wondering if an agency comes in and does the debris removal, then the owners didn't have to get that permit for debris removal and then wouldn't be able to, or how would they then bring their trailer onsite if someone else handled the debris removal?
Through the chair, they were actually still required to obtain a demolition permit for the burned-down structure, which is part of the overall debris removal off of the property. And so the clearance of that demolition permit was a letter from the state saying that they had conducted the removal of the burned-down structure and any ancillary structures. And if somebody were to do it independently, then that was a letter from the Health Department indicating that the site-specific testing had been completed to show that there was no further action necessary.
Anyone else? Commissioner Mendoza?
Yeah, just a quick question. In reference to, I guess, a few of the houses that were up there that burned down were legal non-conforming, how much of a financial burden or what have you, all the new homes that they're looking to build, we have new codes and everything, so is there any assistance for the people that built these houses 70, 80 years ago that were legal non-conforming, but yet today, if they want to build a house, it needs to be designed to today's code or what have you? Is there any assistance for them or what is the county doing to make it easier for them to build? Because obviously building a house 80 years ago is completely different than building one today. So that's just a question that I have.
Yes, and through the chair, legal non-conforming structures, proven that they're legal non-conforming, they would be allowed to rebuild back to the square footage that they lost and an additional 10%. Those fees required, you know, for construction, the permit fees and all of that would have been waived under the fee waiver policy regarding the fire. So they wouldn't have had to pay any permit fees if they stayed within that square footage plus an additional 10%.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right, I'm going back to work here. So it seems to me that the big question I had is what were the differences between the programs we enacted after the river fire and associated fires and the program that we enacted after Pfeiffer and Sobranas fire? And did any of those differences account for the difference in the rebuilding rate? And staff, how would you answer that, given the work that you've done?
Well, I can only speak to the 2020 fires as I was involved with all of that. Having done research for the chimney, or the Sobranas chimney and the Pfeiffer, I found it very difficult to find any history with the fire, Pfeiffer fire rebuilds. And it was a little easier with the Sobranas, but I don't think it was, I mean, I could only guess that it wasn't monitored as it was with the 2020 fires. We set up specific numbering systems in our computers where we reached out and initialized numbers for property owners and, you know, reached out and let them know that we were available to them and we helped them through the process. I don't know that, how well that was done for the other two fires. So I can say that we did improve reaching out and even learned more than we did, you know, under the 2020 fires and would be better prepared, you know, unfortunately, should there be another fire.
So is there a barrier to reaching out posthumously, I suppose is not the right word, but after the fact, to the, to the folks who lost their homes in the prior fires to see if they're equally monitored?
I don't know what those barriers would have been, maybe limited staff. We had, we had more staff on the 2020 fires. We set up a special team of staff members to specifically work with the 2020 fires. Specifically with the Pfeiffer fire, there was one planner who no longer works in the department that I reached out to and basically he was the one person dealing with all of the Pfeiffer fires.
So our takeaway lesson is that the dedicated staff did apparently, by what we can tell, help people move back to their homes more quickly. Is that fair?
That is correct.
So what is the definition of legal non-conforming in the Big Sur Land use plan?
So legal non-conforming is a structure that was built prior to requiring the permits, current permits now. They are easily identified through assessor's records. Assessor's records show how far back they've been on the property and that can be proven that they were built prior to the required permits that we would need now.
What's the date?
It depends on the areas. I would say prior to, generally prior to 1960, 1959.
Are you aware that in the Big Sur Land use plan, definition of existing structures, specifically in the plan, it says existing structures are anything that was there in Would that affect your determination?
I believe we rely on the assessor's records.
I'm not talking, I mean, not about whether they were or not, I'm talking about the line between legal non-conforming and unpermitted. Because it makes a big difference to the requirements that we placed before people for rebuilding. And it appears to me that a reading of the Big Sur Land use plan definitions introduces this question about whether the line should be 1950 something or 1960 something or 1975. And those are big differences, something worth, I think, looking at in this context because if we are using a standard that is more stringent than need be, that's one of the barriers we're talking about attempting to address. Self-contained trailers seem to me to be made more difficult perhaps, if we could look at ways that we could modular, modular units, self-contained trailers, something that people could bring in quickly, minimizing those barriers to doing that and not, I guess I'm looking to way to decouple the site preparation and evaluation process from the building process because that piles so much onto the affected parties that, you know, we make a bigger upfront effort at a time when they may not have the capacity to do that. If there were a way to say permitting and monitoring for the, up to and including, applying for the building permit were separate from subsequently getting a building permit, I think, it appears to me that might be a way to help reduce some of these upfront barriers and let people think about things because in my neighborhood, people would very much like to build their own homes in many cases if they could. And that is almost impossible if you have to do this, get the permit, get consultants in and all that before you can even begin to plan. So that was a thought that I had. Another thought that I have is that I would suggest it would be really helpful to extend assistance programs for the 10 years after full public road access is available for construction vehicles. So I think it would be a good case to ask the supervisors if it would be possible to make those extensions to those programs, given the lack of rebuilding, so that they don't start to run until you can actually begin. It seems pretty logical to me. I don't know what my colleagues might think about that. And I guess, go back to the overarching question, which is what was the difference between the two processes? And I think, Ms. Gonzalez, you've explained the staffing one. Is it, is it fair to suggest that the, all of the remaining differences between who was rebuilt and who hasn't rebuilt have to do with peculiar physical circumstances that differ between the two sites or? Back of my mind says some of it is insurance or something like that. Is, are there, are there other substantial barriers besides the physical conditions on the site that you could look at, that we could add to our list of things we could address? Because obviously we can't change whether there's a mountain there or not. Does that make sense?
It does make sense. And I thought of that as well. I believe the physical barriers plays a big part, especially in Big Sur. The insurance, if you didn't have insurance, we would waive those fees. We would, the only time we would expect fees to be paid is if the insurance company gave you the actual permit fee money to pay the permits. Otherwise, we wouldn't charge any fees.
Assuming it was either permitted or legal non-conforming. Otherwise, we, all bets are off, right?
Correct.
Yeah, okay. All right, I'm going to, having taken up all the airspace here, I apologize, but I appreciate the opportunity to have this conversation in public. And I'd like to invite any members of the public who are interested in this to want to come forward and say their piece, please do. I don't see anybody rushing forward in the chambers. Is there anyone online who would like to speak on this, Madam Clerk?
There are no hands on Zoom and no additional emails.
Thank you. That being the case, I'm going to go ahead and close the public comment period and bring it back to the commission. Commissioners? Seeing no quick movement towards the microphone, I'm going to ask that this item remain on our referral list so that we can hear about progress at addressing any of the suggestions that I think some of us, mainly me, but Commissioner Daniels as well, have brought forward. As we monitor the progress here, sometimes the best thing I can think of to do is keep a light on the issue because I know that this is not over for most of my neighbors. We lost a total, I think, in those fires of well over 70 structures. And so the numbers we see of rebuilding represent a loss of significant community in the area which provides the largest concentrated amount of workforce housing in Big Sur. So this is, this is of grave concern and the bringing, you know, the revitalizing of that neighborhood fully is extremely important to the entire planning area and it's not happening. So we really want to dig down and continue, I'd like to ask, so we keep it as a referral and we continue to hear what we might be able to do or encourage to get done. And I'm going to editorialize on the composting toilets because I've been told for years that it was a previous Health Department Director who had the feeling that that was a bad idea. So I'd like to ask that you go ahead and take another look at what the current status of these and the technology available today might be and whether there is any room for a self-contained unit because the benefit of that is it doesn't require a lot of ground prep, it doesn't require a lot of heavy equipment and it is something that can be available to people on solar, off the grid, in a portable manner. And I think the discussions of monitoring in any system that has a pump is definitely in need of monitoring and maintenance. So it can be done. I just want to continue to highlight that as an option as the Director of the Health Department, who was adamant on this subject, is no longer with us. Things do change over time. Anybody else? Commissioner, work.
And are there also, I think there's incinerator toilets also as options, I think.
There are, there are. They do require electricity, but yes, I think they all do. Anything else? I think that was just received the report and I definitely saw that we had it. Appreciate it. Thank you very much. Did I ask for Commissioner comments and requests? I'm looking here and seeing, did I skip right over that everyone? Madam Clerk, why don't you kick me or something? Let me use the chair's ability to go back and, and ask our commissioners if there's any topics. And these would be topics that might be for referrals or questions or comments. Is there anybody who has anything to say on that? Okay. Commissioner Roberts?
You did skip over that, but I just want to add my, I was going to say weekly, but my twice a month PSA for planning, sorry, LUAC members, which help advise us on issues in their local area. And I'm specifically looking, we are all specifically looking for people in the Monterey Peninsula, the Greater Monterey Peninsula area, LUAC, which is north of Lorelais Grade Highway 1. We are seeking members in that area. We've had a few projects that come, have come to us recently that have not had the benefit of neighborhood review. And those comments and insights are incredibly useful to us. And as Chair Deal mentioned in the previous meeting, we are probably actively seeking LUAC members in just about any area in the county. So if you have any interest in participating in giving, help giving us a perspective of the issues in your local neighborhood, it is greatly appreciated. Each of those LUACs meet maybe three times a year. Even the most active ones, maybe five times a year. It's a very minimal time commitment, but it is very, very valuable information.
And it's not like the Planning Commission. It doesn't take hours and hours. And it's really important. Thank you, Commissioner Roberts. Commissioner Daniels?
Yes, I just want to follow up on what Commissioner Roberts said because I may have found someone for the Greater Monterey Peninsula just yesterday. But I wanted to confirm the area is the Aguahito Road area in the Greater Monterey Peninsula?
I believe that it is, yes.
Fabulous. I will be encouraging them to submit one, maybe two applications.
Outstanding. Anyone else? Nope. Okay. So now I can skip back from the thing I, the thing I didn't do, back to the one that we are supposed to do, which is now Agenda Item Number Four, PLN 230127 McDougall Amy E. And I would like to say that I appreciate while the staff's coming up, if we took about five minutes, because there's been correspondence that came in since I've had a chance to look at it. And I'd just like to, to look, look it over briefly. So if we could just take about five minutes to do that. I don't mean this is, there'll be other breaks, so don't leave the premises. But I just want to make sure, chance to see that material. I think most of us are reassembled with the exception of Commissioner Gatzelman. Those who were here before are present back on the dais at this time. And I expect him any moment. And that would allow us to move forward with Item Number Four as previously discussed, which I believe Ms. Jensen, it's up to you.
Good morning, Chair Deal and members of the Planning Commission. Fiona Jensen presenting HCD Planning File Number PLN 230127, the McDougal application. As a reminder, this item was previously scheduled for the August 28th Planning Commission hearing. Prior to this hearing, the applicant informed staff that they were out of town and could not post necessary notices onsite or attend the hearing. Staff inquired with the applicant and their agent as to whether they could attend the September 25th or October 9th Planning Commission hearings. After receiving no response, staff recommended the Planning Commission continue the item to the next hearing, September 25th, to ensure that proper noticing occurred. After noticing of today's hearing, the applicant submitted written objection to the hearing date and has requested that the item be continued to December 11th. Per Rule 13 of the Planning Commission's bylaws, it is within the Commission's discretion whether to grant the second continuance request. Should the Commission grant the continuance, staff suggests that the item be continued to a date uncertain. Should the Commission not grant the continuance request, the applicant and their representative have submitted letters requesting that the project be withdrawn from consideration. And these letters have been distributed on the dais.
Procedural question, perhaps the counsel. Can we have a conditional withdrawal? That, that's unusual. I've not heard that before.
Yeah. And I actually haven't had a chance to read that letter. Sorry, during your five-minute break, I was busy doing other things. But a conditional withdrawal. I, I think the best course of action that I would recommend is continue to a date certain and give staff an opportunity to speak with the applicant about next steps. Because I, I don't even know what a conditional withdrawal would look like sitting here right now without thinking this through more.
Well, I think it would, the problem that I have is we have been, as we requested, provided with a packet on this item. So we are prepared to hear it if we wished to do so today. It's not like we can't. The applicant has said they're, for reasons, appropriate reasons, as a, as a retired ship captain, I can identify, not able to be here at this time and requested a continuance. Now, the date certain part is not up to them. They're not setting the calendar. So given that there have been failures before, I think staff has, if I'm correct, the date uncertain idea is to be able to consult with the applicant and our schedule and coordinate things. So I think the uncertain versus certain, that's the, the choice. But the idea that if we didn't give the continuance, then the item would be withdrawn, but it isn't otherwise, how would that affect our ability to move forward with the hearing? And staff has recommended denial on this project, suppose we were to do that? Does the withdrawal take place before we have the hearing or doesn't it? I'm sorry, I'm confused.
No, you're, you're right. It, it's a very odd request and it came in last minute. I, I suppose the options are go forward with the hearing today, consider the application, continue the item, which is, as Fiona said, within your discretion. You can continue to a date certain or not. I, I'm not sure about the withdrawal piece. I'd need to think it through. And Robert Brayer is on Zoom currently, and he's been advising Ms. Jensen throughout this process. I don't know if you have anything to add because I'm a little bit stumped on the withdrawal piece. Robert, anything?
Well, I think what they're trying to do is not have this hearing today. So I think that's what the meaning of the request is. I, I don't know either what the best course of action is. I guess it's two questions. Does the, or does the Planning Commission wish to hear this today? I know staff is ready, or continue it. And then the second question is the effect of this request. I think, I think the first one may make the second one unnecessary. So I'd suggest figuring that out first, whether to continue or not.
Thank you. It's just I don't know whether I would support continuance until I know whether we could have a hearing come to a conclusion. And that would be effective because it's a hearing right now or whether that, that comment about withdrawing it means that we wouldn't be able to have the hearing. I just, I'm, I'm too puzzled to even think about it. But it would bear on my, my own thinking about the continuance. Commissioner Daniels?
There's a bunch of paperwork on my desk here, so I'm not able to find the actual letter. But I did read it when we got it. And I wonder, I would be inclined to just hear the item and it's come back and forth and it's a recommendation to denial and we could hear it. But since there is some uncertainty about what that letter means and the withdrawal request, I would be inclined to just continue to a date uncertain so staff can work with the applicant and figure out. And, and in my mind, and please correct me if I'm wrong, letter received aside. I mean, you know, we have a request to continue the item or we could even choose to continue the item without a request as a Planning Commission. And as County Council stated online, you know, the, seems the desire of the applicant is to not have the hearing today and receive a denial. So that, that's not going to happen if we continue the item. And I hear your concern, Chair Deal. But I sort of, in my mind, I'm thinking whatever we received aside, we are continuing the item and staff is going to work with the applicant to find a date when they could actually be here. And, and that's when the, and that's when we would be picking up this conversation, if that makes sense.
And through the chair, realistically, if you did go forward with the hearing today with the withdrawal request out there, it would go forward and then it would require the applicant to appeal it to the Board of Supervisors. And that requires a lot of staff time and board time. So I guess I would keep that in mind from a procedural, realistic standpoint.
Well, there's more going on to this as, besides this applicant. So, besides this application. So kind of even more complicated than that. All right. So we have a request for a continuance. Commissioner Mansalve?
Thank you. I, following up on, on what Commissioner D, uh, Daniels said, thank you. What would be the most efficient option for us to pursue that would be most efficient for staff?
Staff has recommended continuance to a date uncertain. Is that why you think that?
Sorry, staff is recommending to a date uncertain to confirm that either a December 11th hearing date or a later 2025 hearing date will work for the applicant.
And for us, because we have a calendar, an existing calendar as well.
Because we have a letter from applicant saying December.
Right. We have one hearing in December. We've already put items on that hearing. Because they want to be on that hearing is not the only Because they want to be on that hearing is not the only consideration you might wish to make.
Right, but if staff is saying that December 11th would work, I don't know that they've said that yet. But what does this do to notice? If it's decided here, date uncertain, does that mean that then they have to go back out and notice again, because they can't count on the applicant to post notice, because they didn't for the last one? All of that.
Correct. It would have to be renoticed.
If the date is not decided here today.
Correct.
Thank you.
And I think, yeah, and if I may just add to that, I think we did receive a good amount of public comment as well on this matter. So I think even if it were continued to a date uncertain, while we would not legally be required to renotice, if it were to a date certain, renoticing might be in the benefit if it's delayed multiple months before coming back. I did just want to add also, just to clarify, that yes, while the applicant is indicating their availability on December 11th, staff is recommending the date uncertain, because it's not just applicants' availability. We have one meeting in December. Our agendas tend to get clustered up quite a bit, and so maintaining the ability for staff to move items around based on other items that likewise may need to come before the Commission, that flexibility to be December 11th or later. So a date uncertain would be preferred for that purpose.
So if it's the sense of the Commission that we'd like to talk about continuing it, I'd like to go to the public and see if they have any comments on the continuance. Is that, I'm seeing nods. Is there anybody who objects to focusing on the continuance for the moment? I don't see anybody doing that. All right. I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing with, apparently the applicant is not here, but if the applicant's representative wants to say anything about the continuance, they're welcome to do so here or online. Is there anybody, Madam Clerk, online? I see nobody in the chambers.
No, it doesn't look like there's any hands up on Zoom.
That being the case, I'm going to open it to anybody who would like to comment on this item. You're welcome to come forward and talk about the request for the continuance at this time. If that fails, we'll have additional public comment opportunities. If anybody wants to talk about the continuance, anybody in the chambers? See nobody coming forward. Is there anybody online who wants to talk about the matter of the continuance?
It does not look like we have any hands up on Zoom.
And I'm assuming we didn't have emails, or you would have said.
No, we do not have any new emails either.
Outstanding. I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing on the matter of the continuance of this item, bring it back to the Commission. Commissioners. Commissioner Gonzalez.
Thank you. That's good conversation, but I think that Commissioner Mansalve, I think asked everybody asked good questions, but Commissioner Mansalve asked what would be better for staff, and I guess staff responded that a continuance to a date uncertain would be better in terms of looking at the particular dates, whether it be December or a different date, at least gives us options. And so with that, I would like to make a motion to continue to a date uncertain, and that the staff has the opportunity to speak to the owner, builder, the applicant, and try to find whether that date will work or not, or find a date that will potentially work. And so I do move for the continuance to a date uncertain.
There's a motion by Commissioner Gonzalez to continuance to a date uncertain. Is there a second for that motion? Commissioner Mansalve, do you want to second that?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there further discussion on the dais? Anybody? Commissioner Robert?
The one thing I'd like to make sure that the applicant is aware, that we do have that established limit of two requests, and that essentially this is the second request, and that they're aware of that in choosing a date, or working with staff to choose a date for the next meeting.
Staff's nodding their head, I think. Okay. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'm going to go ahead and call for the vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. And the motion carries. The item is continued to a date uncertain. Thank you, everybody. I'm not going to have another break, because everybody took that one. That brings us to item number five on our agenda, which is REF 240016. And we'll just be a moment while we change our personnel up here, because our secretary's going to go down to help with the presentation. Once that's done, Mr. Sanchez and Ms. Buretti will be ready. Welcome. Let you get your computer plugged in. Almost back online? Okay. All right. Mr. Sanchez, would you like to go ahead and talk about the coastal zone updated accessory dwelling unit and junior accessory dwelling unit regulations, please?
Yes. Good morning, Chair Deal, Planning Commissioners. My name is Edgar Sanchez. I am the project planner for REF 240016, Coastal ADU Regulation Updates. The project before you today is an adoption of a resolution recommending that the Board of Supervisors find the project statutorily exempt from CEQA and to adopt the resolution of intent to amend the Monterey County Local Coastal Program to amend the applicable land use plans, adopt an ordinance, and add an appendix to update the regulations relating to accessory dwelling units and junior accessory dwelling units. The State of California recognizes ADUs and JADUs as a valuable form of affordable by design housing options, allowing ADUs and JADUs in single-family and multiple-family residential zones, provides an additional rental housing stock throughout California in existing neighborhoods. In recognition of these benefits, the State of California Planning and Zoning Law governing ADUs and JADUs has been updated multiple times over the last several years with the intent to remove barriers, streamline the approval process that will increase affordable by design housing stock. The preparation, adoption, amendment, and implementation of local ADU and JADU ordinances must be carried out consistent with government code. The approach during this update was to include provisions in a manner that harmonize the state's housing laws with the Coastal Act, with the goal of protecting coastal resources while also reducing barriers to constructing ADUs and JADUs and promoting more affordable coastal housing. So to provide some history on the amendments made to ADU regulations in the past, in 2011, the Board of Supervisors adopted an LCP amendment that replaced references to caretaker units with accessory dwelling units in Title 20. A subsequent update in 2015 updated the regulations for accessory dwelling units in Title 20. These are the regulations that are in effect today in our coastal zones. Following this update, the state enacted a series of additional laws relative to accessory dwelling units and junior accessory dwelling units between 2017 and 2019. And in response, in 2020, the county updated the ADU and the JADU regulations in both the Title 21 inland zoning and the Title 20 coastal zoning. But both the inland and the coastal updates were adopted by the Board of Supervisors. The coastal updates were never certified by the California Coastal Commission and never went into effect. California Coastal Commission did provide staff suggested modifications that would make the county's LCP amendment relating to ADUs and JADUs more consistent with the requirements of the Coastal Act. And this brings us to the current process where we're updating ADU and JADU regulations to ensure consistency with both the state and the Coastal Act. So I want to provide some distinctions between the two unit types. For accessory dwelling units or ADUs, these units can be up to 1,200 square feet. These units can be attached or detached or converted from existing accessory structures. These units must provide independent facilities for cooking, sanitation, and sleeping, and there is no internal circulation with the main residence. There is also no owner occupancy for these units, and there's no deed restriction placed on them. For a junior accessory dwelling unit or a JADU, these units can be up to 500 square feet. These units are fully contained within the walls of a single-family dwelling, and they may share a bathroom and central systems, but they must have an independent efficiency kitchen. They may share internal circulation with the main residence if they will be sharing a bathroom with the main residence. And there is owner occupancy requirements for these units, meaning the owner can reside in the JADU or the main residence, and these units are deed restricted. So in addition to the updated definitions, state legislation updated other components relating to the development of ADUs, which include revised development standards such as height allowances, size requirements, and setbacks when constructing an ADU. ADUs cannot be precluded based on lot size requirement, parcel density requirement, and unit caps requirements. These units cannot be used as vacation rentals. There is a 30-day minimum rental period for these units. And ADUs can now, may now be sold separately. State law provides criteria for when these units can be sold, including, included in the ordinance, and most notably, these, the ADU or the primary dwelling has to have been built or developed by a qualified nonprofit corporation. So ADUs up to 800 square feet, a local jurisdiction cannot unduly preclude based on lot coverage, front setbacks, or floor area ratio. When these restrictions, the ADU up to 800 square feet, these units can be waived to allow for the 800 square feet ADU. ADU applications cannot be denied due to the correction of non-conforming zoning conditions, building code violations, or unpermitted structures on the property that do not present a threat to health and safety and are not affected by the construction of the JADU or ADU. And according to the new state planning and zoning law, the permitting agency must approve or deny the application to create an ADU or a JADU within 60 days from the date that the agency receives a completed application, provided there is an existing single-family or a multiple-family dwelling on the lot. So currently adopted ADU regulations in the coastal zones specify that ADUs are allowed in the, within the following residential zones included up on the screen. However, state law requires the ADUs be allowed in zoning districts with, that permits single-family and multiple-family dwelling. Therefore, during this update, ADU and JADU regulation will be allowed in the previously allowed zoning residential districts following, sorry, I had a different slide here, but included, the first residential zones are the high-density residential zones, the medium residential, and the low-density residential, and the rural density, and the watershed and scenic conservation easement. The additional zoning districts in which ADUs will be allowed is the coastal general commercial, and the moss-landing commercial, and visitor-serving commercial, coastal agricultural preserve, and the agricultural conservation districts.
I might make a very brief note. Just note that the watershed and scenic conservation zoning district is an agricultural district and should be listed with them. It's not a residential district. Thanks.
So according to the new state planning and zoning law, local governments can establish a minimum and maximum size requirements for both attached and detached ADUs. So in the Carmel Area Land Use Plan, the Del Monte Forest Land Use Plan areas, the proposed ordinance stipulates that the newly constructed attached and detached ADUs, as well as convergence of legally constructed accessory structures built after March 25th, 2024, must not exceed the 1,200 square feet. For the protection of coastal resources, the Big Sur Coast Land Use Plan, the North County Land Use Plan, and any area with a B8 combining zoning district, there is a stricter size limitation due to the known constraints within these areas. Here, newly constructed attached and detached ADUs and convergence of legally constructed accessory structures built after March 25th, 2024 must not exceed 1,000 square feet. Across all planning areas, JADUs will be allowed. They will be limited to the 500 square feet and contain fully within the existing single-family residence. Also, across all planning areas, ADUs created through the conversion of space within an existing main structure must not exceed 50% of the total square footage of the existing The limitation on the number of ADUs has been updated and now categorizes lots with multiple-family dwellings separately and provides an alter variation for the allowed units. Parcels within existing or a proposed single-family dwelling are allowed 1 ADU and 1 JADU. Parcels with a proposed multiple-family dwelling are allowed up to 2 detached ADUs. And parcels with an existing multiple-family dwelling are also allowed the 2 detached ADUs. But they're also allowed at least 1 ADU within the multiple-family dwelling and be allowed up to 25% of the existing multiple-family dwellings. So in an effort to streamline the permit process for applicants and our county departments, the proposed ordinance has established a three-tier approval process for ADUs and JADUs based on their impact. In the first tier, certain ADUs may be exempt from the requirement of a coastal permit if they are consistent with the applicable local coastal program regulations and fall within the unit type specified in Monterey County Code 20.70.120. The unit types in this exemption include the establishment of either an attached or a detached ADU not exceeding 1,000 square feet, the conversion of an existing structure or portion of a single-family dwelling into an ADU, and the establishment of a JADU. In the second tier, ADUs that are now listed under the exempt types in the Monterey County Code 20.70.120 will require a coastal administrative permit. This includes ADUs over 1,000 square feet. Applications for a coastal administrative permit for an ADU shall be processed in accordance to the requirements of Chapter 20.76 of the Monterey County Code, except that no public hearing shall be required. And finally, in addition to the previous tiers, a coastal development permit may be necessary if the project includes components that require such a permit pursuant to other sections of our Monterey County Code. The county's zoning has a number of permit triggers, also known as non-exempt development, that are specific to the protection of coastal resources, which would not be affected by So previous versions of the ADU regulations require the ADUs be designed in such a manner as to be visually consistent with and compatible with the principal residents onsite and other residents in the area. This has been, since then, been removed and replaced with a new state planning and zoning law, which requires that local development standards and design review be solely based on objective standards. To harmonize state law and the protection of scenic and visual resources as required by the Coastal Act, ADUs within the Del Monte Forest, the Carmel Area, the Big Sur Coast planning areas, and areas that have a design control D combining district overlay will require a design approval permit. So state planning and zoning law allows local jurisdictions to impose parking standards for ADUs and JADUs. To avoid conflicts regarding parking requirements for ADUs as they may impact public access, county staff has worked with coastal commission staff to identify and map specific neighborhoods and locations where high visitor demand for public on-street parking needed for coastal access, and to specify the parking requirements for each, for such area. So in working with the California Coastal Commission, there are areas mapped in the Carmel Point and the Carmel River State Beach North area, where ADU parking needs may have an impact to public access and high recreational, the high recreational use levels along the Scenic Road corridor, and the lack of parking and other support facilities. And the lack of separation between the public lands and the private property on the ocean side of Scenic Road creates parking-related conflicts. Therefore, the potential for ADU parking needs that are Therefore, the potential for ADU parking needs are, that are shifted onto adjacent public streets, which may adversely affect public coastal access, is high. Staff designated Scenic Road and adjacent streets extending 500 feet from Scenic Road as ADU parking require, which would require one off-street parking per ADU in the area in order to ensure that ADU development would not adversely impact the public access in this area. Parcels outside of the mapped area will not require off-street parking for ADUs. So going into the land use plans, in the Big Sur Coast Land Use Plan, the text and policies of Chapter 5 Land Use and Development would be updated to add language to encourage JADUs in the plan as a means of providing additional low and moderate housing opportunities. The plan will specify the ADUs will be limited to 1,000 square feet in size. And in addition, in working with the Big Sur Ad Hoc Committee, in the, in this amendment, there is a proposed 90-day minimum rental duration period for ADUs within the Big Sur area to ensure that units are used for long-term residential purposes and to avoid monthly vacation rentals. The new regulations would also prohibit ADUs in the Big Sur critical view shed to ensure consistency with the scenic resource policies, and the 50-unit cap on ADUs will be removed from the plan. In the Carmel Area Land Use Plan, the text and policies would be updated to include encouraging JADUs as a mean of, means of providing affordable housing, and the 40-acre minimum parcel requirement for the development of ADUs will be removed to be consistent with state law. So currently, in the North County Land Use Plan, due to the critically short water supply levels, ADUs are not permitted. The county has implemented water-saving measures, and any additional development beyond what is permitted can only be permitted after safe yields have been established by an approved LCP amendment. Any amendment request must be based on definitive water studies and include appropriate water management programs. Staff interpreted the groundwater sustainability plans, or GSPs, established by the groundwater sustainability agencies as definitive water studies that include water management programs for residential uses. So consistent with the available data from the groundwater sustainability plans and to allow ADUs and JADUs in the North County Land Use Plan, staff explored incorporating water conservation measures to provide applicants with guidance on how to demonstrate that development will result in efficient water use levels. The proposed water conservation measures were developed by review of existing water conservation practices in Monterey County, best practices for other rural jurisdictions, the groundwater sustainability plans, and the California Green Building Code standards. Specific measures include the use of low-flow fixtures, energy-efficient appliance, and drought-resistant landscaping. So as a result of these findings, in the North County Land Use Plan, the text and policies would be updated to add language to allow ADUs and JADUs as a means of providing affordable housing. The language will specify that ADUs will be limited to the 1,000-square-feet size limitation, and ADUs and JADUs will also be required to incorporate additional water conservation standards, and these units will not count towards the build-out limitation in the plan. So following today's meeting, staff will continue to work with the California Coastal Commission to review the draft language to prevent substantial modifications later in the process. County has shared the proposed LCP amendments to coastal commission staff and will continue to work with the staff to refine the language. Additionally, staff plans to present the updates to the Board of Supervisors in November or December. The regulations must then be submitted to the state HCD within 30 days after the board hears them to ensure that ADU law amendments align with the state law as closely as possible. This approach aligns with the direction from the California Coastal Commission and state HCD staff, which requires that the draft LCP amendments implementing ADU law be submitted to state HCD for review prior to local adoption and submission to the California Coastal Commission. Once the state returns with comments or finds a language consistent with state law, it will be then submitted to the California Coastal Commission for certification. So today...
And I think staff just wanted to acknowledge that we did receive formal comments from the coastal commission. Those are before you. Staff has had a chance to review those, and we think they're very workable to work with coastal commission staff. And in addition, there was additional public comment received from, specifically from Molly Erickson, where in that, in particular, there are a couple of concerns around typos or inconsistencies in the language. And in fact, a couple of them, staff has reviewed and, and are easily addressed and do concur that those should be corrected. So I just wanted to flag that for the commission's consideration. Unhand it back.
So today, it is recommended that the Planning Commission adopt a resolution recommending that the Board of Supervisors find the project statute totally exempt from CEQA and adopt a resolution of intent to amend the Monterey County Local Coastal Program, amending the applicable land use plans, adopt an ordinance, and add an appendix to update regulations relating to accessory dwelling units and junior accessory dwelling units. This concludes staff presentation, and I am available for questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sanchez. Any questions? Commissioner Roberts.
I have questions just based on what I kind of remember what ADUs and junior ADUs are. And at one point, we required a second water connection for ADUs. Is that still something that is required?
So there is a review from Environmental Health Department. I don't know the specifics for that, but I believe Nikki is here to answer some of those questions.
Welcome back, Ms. Fowler.
Why, thank you. It's good to see you all again. Thank you, Nikki Fowler, Environmental Health. Through the chair, there, an accessory dwelling unit is considered a service connection on a local small or estate small water system. Any of the regulated, or any of the systems regulated by the Environmental Health Bureau up to 199 connections. The reason being is that it is a rentable unit, and a whole individual family could live there, and so we're wanting to ensure safe water. That provision is specified in Monterey County Code, Chapter 1504.
To follow up, then, I guess I'm curious to know how that affects Carmel Valley or other places that have limited connection ability.
In terms of, if, if somebody had a private well and then wanted to add an ADU onto their property, there is a provision in the code that says if the ADU would not be rented, leased, or offered for remuneration, it is not required to obtain a water system permit. It does, however, need to meet the water quality and source capacity standards required for new dwelling units. If there was a, say, a five-connection water system and an ADU was proposed to, to be added, the Health Department would request a will-serv letter from that water system to confirm that they are aware of the proposed additional service connection and that they support it. We find that to be appropriate and necessary because so many of those water systems have limiting factors. They, maybe they have wells that don't produce adequately, or they have limited storage. And so we are essentially asking for a will-serv letter for those.
And so in terms of the CalAM prohibition on connections, this is something different than that?
Thank you for that clarification, yes. So CalAM isn't, doesn't come top of, top of mind for me since we don't regulate those. My understanding is that ADUs do not require a standalone meter, so it's 1 meter per property, and that if they are subject to water management district requirements, they just have to have adequate fixture units available to them in order to support the ADU.
I think I have one more question also for you, and that is septic. Is septic an issue for any of these?
It's, it can be a big issue, actually, yeah. Depending on, typically on the lot size. So our septic requirements look at, for ADUs, we tell people there's going to be three criteria that need to be met. One of them is the capacity of the septic system. Is there enough room in the tank in the leach field to accommodate the additional hydraulic load proposed from the dwelling unit? Is there ample future replacement area? Before we add another structural footprint, we want to make sure that there's land area available to accommodate a future replacement of the septic system, since those dispersal systems do have finite kind of lifespans. And third, and often the most restrictive, is nitrogen loading. And so essentially, septic systems discharge nitrogen from human waste down into the groundwater table. And so our regulations are set up to limit the density of dwelling units that are served by septic systems to, to prevent potential groundwater contamination. So typically, 1 acre equates to like a three-bedroom house on a conventional septic system. If you're going to have a higher density than that, then a pretreatment system needs to be incorporated in to reduce the nitrogen level in the wastewater effluent before it's disposed of on site. So it's possible, again, I answered that question earlier, engineering can, you know, accomplish just about anything, but it's going to be a more expensive feat. So if somebody has like a 2-acre property, generally speaking, they're going to be able to get an ADU on a conventional septic system, barring any other site constraints like slopes, surface water running through the property, et cetera. But we see applications for, say, .8-acre properties, relatively small lots. If people are willing and able to do the engineering work, they're able to have designs approved that meet the health and safety requirements and are protective of groundwater and the environment.
Thank you. That was helpful because this, everything presented seems super permissive, but obviously there's still great barriers in some areas, probably.
Certainly.
Thank you.
Commissioner Daniels?
Thank you. Since we just got the coastal commission letter today, and I was trying to just read it, could you just walk us through what, what the coastal commission said? And it sounds like it is, according to what Ms. Beretti said, addressable, but, if that's even a word. But could you just walk us through what they stated so we can understand better?
Yeah, and I think I'll start, I'll start backward with the coastal commissions. So on the last page, they have Carmel Point ADU parking map. So they suggest some additional areas that should, would, should appropriately also require at least one parking space. And that's basically those fronting Carmelo Street to the intersection of Carmelo and 16th Avenue. And so perhaps if you can pull the map up. Can you share, staff, right? So be, yeah, more or less in these areas. So we can work to refine the areas where parking would be required in order to maintain adequate parking for public access, and that is the, the concern that, that the Coastal Act is trying to address.
Question on that?
Please.
There's no parking on that section of Scenic Road now, is there, that, that is currently on your map? I mean, the whole area, the southern curve...
A substantial portion has been narrowed. It's one-way, and it's narrowed to a single lane, and there is not parking. So yes, portions of Scenic Road and a substantial portion of it, there is no parking currently.
Okay, I'm not losing my mind here. Thanks.
No, you're not.
Well, on that count.
In terms of, so then the next, going backwards, in terms of the ADU exemption language, so the ADU exemption language, what coastal commission staff is acknowledging that in concept, there is a way to exempt some certain type and size of ADU. They specifically flagged some inconsistencies in how we've incorporated the exemption language, which would allow detached 1,000 square, up to 1,000 square foot, or in other areas, 1,200 square foot, or 1,000 square feet, I'm sorry, ADUs, 1,000 square feet. And specifically, they're flagging that, they interpret that the Coastal Act specifically would require that only attached ADUs. So JADUs are already internal to the structure and then attached ADUs. So staff views that as a refinement and, and just working to refine what is considered to fit into the, a qualified exemption, and then some clarifying language as to where ESHA and other non-exempt activities would, would apply. So that is that general requirement, and please, any questions?
Yes, trying to follow. So if, maybe by just sharing with me what the amendment might look like, that would help me understand. I, I understand the exempt, the, I'm, I'm understanding, it seems like what they're saying in paragraph 1, but I'm not understanding what they're asking us to do and how we're going to address it.
You pull up. If you can bear with staff one minute, we will actually, we will try to pull up the ordinance language as the exemption language is crafted. I would say I don't know that staff's prepared to fully wordsmith, but...
Not, not, not asking that. Definitely not asking that from the day. The county cannot create a new type of category of CDP exemptions in excess of what the Coastal Act and its regulations already specify. Are we doing that?
Coastal Commission staff wants us to narrow the category of ADU and JADU that are exempt from a coastal development permit. I, I think coastal commission staff opinion is that we've overstepped by allowing detached ADUs of 1,000 feet to not have to obtain a coastal development permit. So they're wanting us to dial back what applicants have to obtain in order to build an ADU. And their belief is that's because of language in the Coastal Act, which reads kind of together with the state ADU law. The state ADU law does not supersede the Coastal Act.
So through the chair, state ADU law does not supersede the Coastal Act. That I understand. We had the exemption for the 800 square feet or less in a previous, like, that basically anything that's 800 square feet or less, we were told before, is, is permissible? Is, is it that we tried to make that 800 square feet, 1,000? Thank you, Ms. Beretti, if you could just clarify.
Yeah, so for clarification, so for clarification, the 800-square-foot, and I'm air quoting, exempt ADU, it's not exempt from permitting, that's a misnomer. The 800-square-foot is state law requires that certain, certain standards such as floor area ratio, setbacks, et cetera, cannot be applied if they would prohibit at least an 800-square-foot. So that is more of a base that we are not allowed to prohibit based on certain criteria, as long as it meets minimum fire safety access, et cetera. In terms of the permit process and exemption to a coastal administrative or development permit, that is the exemption that we are talking about currently. And if we could, do you want to go ahead?
Yeah, can you share, staff, computer?
There was a chart in the presentation that had the category, the...
Yeah, well, it would help if we can, what we'd like to do is share the language and what we're proposing. There is an existing exemption for, there's an existing exemption for accessory structures up to 1,000 square feet. And staff built upon that existing exemption to incorporate up to 1,000-square-feet conversion for accessory dwelling units. And this goes back to what coastal commission staff is indicating is that for attached, they concur, they feel that the Coastal Act language is clear that for attached, that would be appropriate, but that detached dwelling units would not qualify for that exemption per Coastal Act. So that is the piece, the inclusion of detached ADUs, that as an exempt. So it doesn't mean they wouldn't be allowed, it just means they wouldn't qualify for an exemption, and per our regulations would therefore go through in a coastal administrative permitting process without required hearing.
Would they still be subject to the 60-day turnaround time? But even without the exemption, is there still, as part of this ordinance, some type of expedited process for build, for, for going through this process?
There is still an expedited process, yes. I'm going to look to Edgar for the person...
Yeah, so for state law, it states that once we receive the completed application, sometimes applications will be submitted, and, but they're not deemed complete. So once the application is deemed complete, it would be the 60-day process would start.
But to be, but to be clear, so that would be to get to a decision if the ADU itself did not trigger other coastal development permit requirements, such as being within 100 feet of ESHA, within 750, you know, within 50 feet of coastal, other triggers, in which case, we would then process those according as separate non-exempt activities related to the, the building of an ADU.
So then, just to follow up on the original comment, you believe that this is, we can, we can address this in the ordinance, the, the letter, and the statement that they made about ADU exempt language, is the plan for the county to address that and bring it into conformance? with what Coastal Commission is saying? Or do we not agree with what they're saying?
Having not had a chance to just look at the legal language, conceptually, if that's the concurrence, then I think it's workable. But again, staff has not had a chance to-
Got it.
But it seems rational, and if indeed, that including a detached is inconsistent with coastal state law, then that, removing that exemption and just processing those through the process that we've laid out otherwise in the ordinance would be very workable. So we will refine it, but I can't weigh in whether or not we concur yet, because we haven't had the chance to really dive into that. But it's very workable if that is the outcome.
Okay, and then the last one was the North County Groundwater Resources comment?
Yeah, so in general, so what we are trying to do currently, we, in North County, we are not, accessory dwelling units are not allowed. So we, staff has worked, and what is proposed in the current draft of the ordinance includes requirements to do water conservation measures, et cetera. Coastal Commission staff indicates that they don't feel that goes far enough, they don't feel that that properly balances water consideration constraints. How we would get there, their general take-home is that they would like a finding that says there is no net increase in water usage with the, with an accessory dwelling unit. Exactly how that might work, we knew that this particular issue might require a little back and forth with Coastal Commission staff. So it's not a surprise that we have a little more work to do on it. What that might look like, again, staff can't quite indicate, because we need time to kind of fully digest. And there's a distinction between where we have existing units, where you have an existing water use versus, you know, how do you incorporate findings for and not yet developed a lot. So this one is a little more tricky. We did expect to potentially have to work a little bit back and forth with Coastal Commission staff. Whether or not we land on a space that is in complete concurrence with Coastal Commission staff and what that'll look like, again, we aren't there yet based on this. But we did anticipate, and we do hope to come to resolution. Staff really views it as wanting to really work with Coastal Commission, acknowledging that we need to find a pathway in where we can appropriately allow those, and so we would address that.
Great, thank you.
So just to follow up on that briefly, we are agreeing with everybody and his brother that there really is a water shortage in North County. So we have to take appropriate provisions to not make it worse by allowing ADUs, right? Is that kind of the summation, where we're going to limit our ability to, people's ability to build an ADU to whether, to when they are not increasing their water use, right?
So we're acknowledging that there is, that yes, there are water limitations and that there are groundwater issues. I think where and how we get there is sort of the level of reliance and how to rely on the groundwater sustainability agencies, how they are needing to and requiring to implement, implement projects, programs that would help balance the basin, as well as sort of what anticipated growth is already a part of those calculations. So yes, but with some caveats in terms of sort of what that means in terms of allowing ADUs, and how to evaluate, assess, and make findings for their water impacts during this interim, and given the sustainability, GSP, Groundwater Sustainability Agency roles with adopted plan implementation. For example, one of the suggestions and comments that have come up is, is there a way for there to be fees where individuals that are developing, in this case, ADUs in North County, could contribute to a fee structure that might help support implementation of some of the requirements and the plans and activities laid out in the groundwater sustainability plan over the long term to help balance the basin? And I'll look to county council to-
Yeah, I was just going to bring you back. On top of what GSPs say and kind of big picture, I think Coastal Commission staff is also pushing for basically a water-neutral situation if someone's going to build an ADU, and they say ideally water-reducing, and they look at more specific, smaller items like landscaping, water usage offsets and efficiencies, water-efficient appliances. So I think their position is, we need more specific regulations on those pieces to ensure water neutrality within the North County area.
To be, so let me just try to see if I understand. So the county, and Melanie's just articulated a reliance on larger-scale efforts and plans that might be considered as part of the county's proposal. And I'm understanding Ms. Donlin has saying that the Coastal Commission wants more of a site-specific, project-specific evaluation and approach. Is that, is that what I'm hearing? Or maybe they're not mutually exclusive?
Yeah, I guess that doesn't seem as mutually exclusive, is that, but how we get the right policy language that balances the two, I'm simply reserving the right that staff hasn't had the opportunity to dive in and have a full conversation with Coastal Commission staff, and to see what the policy language would be and concur with it. So yes, to me, they're not, they're not, they're not, excuse me, they're not mutually exclusive, but there are some nuances. For example, what does that, that look like in different scenarios in North County, built versus unbuilt lots, et cetera? And can we, and therefore, what does the policy look like and how do we achieve it?
Yes, I'm struggling with how a member of the public would know what's going on. All this language is, sounds like we're focusing on technical concerns from the Coastal Commission and others, at the expense of potentially clarifying allowances and expectations for members of the general public. And so I become increasingly concerned if these things are not, if you're not ready to make that discussion, it's really different if you know you have to go in and you have to show that you aren't going to use any more water, or if you know you have to go in and make some kind of evaluation that will depend on some off-site anything. It's a big deal, and it would bear on whether somebody wanted to make that plan. And so I'm really concerned about pinning that down. And then, an entirely minor comment on that, in many people's minds, but not in mine, is I think it's really important to remember that the production of food on your property is not the same as landscaping. We don't want to inadvertently disallow vegetable gardens and orchards and the things that feed people, because that's a significant effect on people's income and their available amount of money to spend. So just as we're moving forward, some of the language in the Coastal Commission letter appeared to me to be pretty specific about not allowing that. And I'd like to speak in favor of keeping in mind, food availability is also an important affordability factor for a lot of people. Commissioner Mendoza, did you have your hand up?
I did. Just a couple of observations. We're talking about the North County area. Just recently, we added like 98 units for farmworker housing, and we had a letter from Pahrul Sunny Mesa Water that they would serve it. And so to all the residents that currently have homes in the North Montery County area that wish to add an ADU, it just seems like, well, wait a minute, you just added this many houses, and yet I have a son, daughter that needs housing, and I have a good-sized lot, and I want to add a house to the back of mine, and I can't do that because of the water situation. It just quite doesn't sit well, and I think we need to find a way to fix that. Furthermore, I know that some of the water that is going up to the North Montery County area is coming from the recycle water that they use for irrigation. Now, I don't know if that is actually being considered when they make the water determination in reference to if there's enough water for additional development. That would be another thing that we need to look at. Not saying that Coastal Commission doesn't know what's going on in their areas, but you know, it's a big area. It's a huge area, so I don't know if they're up to par for all the things that we have going up, going on in our area. We are part of the Pahrul Valley Water Agency, that I don't know if they know that. I mean, they might, you know? Do they know how much water we're getting from them for irrigating in our area? So those are all things that we need to figure out, and it would be a really good idea to get the Pahrul Sunny Mesa Agency involved, and also Cal Water that serves some of our areas, and hear from them how much water we really have. You know, how did we make the determination that there isn't enough water for future development? Secondly, yes, we are an agriculture community, but you know, we have to have a balance at some point or another. You know, there's crops that require a lot of water, then there's crops that don't, that aren't as much water-intensive as others. So I think we need to figure out a balance for our area and not say, well, you can't do this, can't do that. And furthermore, low-water usage fixtures, that's a norm. I think you want to, you do that in every single house that is built. You're not going to put any fixtures that require an abundance amount of water, so I don't think that that's, we're looking at that as well. Landscape-wise, I think that is a really good one. You know, you have to have landscape that makes sense, you know, low-water usage landscape totally makes sense. It's just kind of a point of view, and I don't know if all those things are taken into consideration, we're making the determination whether North Montery County, what they can and cannot do. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions before we take it back to the staff? I just wanted to give us a chance, before we got into the next thing, to talk about those. The only thing I would say is also, focusing on North County, we received a letter from Molly Erickson. Have you had a chance to review that as well, and any comments on the items that are in there?
And just to be clear for the record, it's Molly Erickson on behalf of friends, artists, and neighbors of Elkhorn Slough.
And it's the September 24th letter?
Staff was able to review it, not to necessarily dig into the nuts and bolts of what's in it. But the concerns are heard, absolutely, and, for example, the consideration of these being affordable by design, that question, and whether or not it's clear that there should be language that actually encourages these to be actual restricted for low and moderate. That's one suggestion, so staff can look into that. Yeah, I guess I'll stop there.
I did hear staff talk about the, recognizing some of the suggestions about typos and things like that.
Yeah, those we did, yeah, those seemed fairly straightforward. We just did not have an opportunity to fully read and fully digest the comments with regards to water in particular in North County, as well as consider those in the context of Coastal Commission and the current ordinance.
I guess one of the things I wanted to ask was, I vaguely recall the prohibition of using residential unit caps with respect to ADUs, and I think portion of this letter suggests that these should be counted in the North County caps. Am I misremembering the state requirements there?
So state law does prohibit counting ADU against residential unit caps. It does not prohibit putting policies and considering, for example, water supply and availability, that's a health, safety issue. So, so yes, the way we write is, it doesn't, we do not count ADUs against a residential unit count, however, inasmuch as, you know, certain limits are established, if there's, given water constraints, for example, then the policy attempts to address the water limitation. And we are able to, per state law, disallow ADUs in certain areas based on water, wastewater, and certain public health, safety issues. So what the, again, what the regulations attempt to do is acknowledge where we have critical water issues, and try to thread that needle to find a way where we can allow them, given those water concerns, in as much as the policy helps to address the water constraints in the particular area. I think what we've heard, and I think there's merit, for example, there are different water, there are different water in North County, if we're just generally applying North County, there's different water basins and water management agencies. And so, again, going back and taking a little more refined look as well, if, you know, if we can refine, if we may need to refine based on area and particular circumstances, that's something staff can look into, as well as looking at the concept of no net increase balanced with some of the other concerns that have been raised in terms of, you know, again, we don't want policies that essentially encourage us to convert agricultural land to residential because of the way a policy's written, so.
Yes, I'm going back to the fans' letter here. My question, I should know this, is residential build-out allowed in the North County plan a residential unit cap, or is it based on some kind of environmental criteria? Is it a water cap, or is it a unit cap? Because the suggestion here is that, in the letter, that ADU should be considered part of residential build-out. Do we know which it is? Just trying to clarify my mind what is being asked here.
So staff's understanding is it was a unit cap based on water? But again, the entire landscape on how groundwater is managed and the responsibility for how we get to sustainable groundwater basins has shifted.
Yeah, I'm not asking about water, I'm asking about the question about whether that unit cap is separate from a water situation, or whether it's just a flat-out build-out cap, like we would have in other parts of the county, in which case, we would have no way to address it under the state law. So do we have any discretion in this?
Let me, I'm going to read the state law that states where, within an ordinance, locals can designate where ADUs can be permitted. "The designation of areas may be based on the adequacy of water and sewer services and the impact of accessory dwelling units on traffic flow and public safety." So I know that doesn't directly answer your question, but I wanted to actually get the language, and it's Government Code 66314, subsection A, where it discusses that.
Is there additional language that specifically addresses residential unit caps and use accounting against residential development limits? I don't remember exactly, but I vaguely remember that there is such a thing.
Yeah, I don't remember off the top of my head. I don't know if staff does, it may take a minute to-
Yeah, we're looking to find that specific language in state law.
That's okay, I just, obviously, we haven't had a chance to digest those two letters particularly well, since the Coastal Commission came in at like, two minutes to five yesterday, and the other one came in sometime in the night when I was asleep. So I appreciate that staff hasn't had a chance to address that, but I wanted to make sure that we have on our radar that a decision that I would want to make would have to, we'd have to know whether we had discretion to do something before we decided to do it or not, is all. Any other questions on the North County section before we go back to staff? Commissioner Daniels?
It's, it sounds like perhaps we might be coming back. So when we do, if we do, the, there's a paragraph in this letter that talks about baseline water use, and if, for any reason, staff thinks that that is going to be something in the ordinance, setting baseline water use and having it be a date prior to now, that is something I think that would be important, having lived through September Ranch and other projects that sought to amend their baseline water use by using lots of water. And then, the other thing I wanted to say was, in light of the conversation about water savings and water neutrality, you know, it is possible to save a lot in terms of using water fixtures and water savings devices that, you know, in particular, in the area that Commissioner Roberts asked about with Cal-Am and the service area, I mean, we've saved thousands of acre-feet per year in terms of reductions. We've reduced our water usage just with these types of measures. terms of reductions. We've reduced our water usage just with these types of measures alone. I'm curious why that wouldn't be something that would be, you know, if it's, if folks are encouraged to use low-flow devices, for example, wouldn't that be something we'd want for everywhere in the coastal zone? I'm just curious. It is the norm. I don't, I think people use low-flow toilets now. So I'm just trying to understand, like, what we're being asked to do here. I guess it's a bit of what Commissioner Mendoza was saying.
Well, I also just piggyback on that as their thinking. It's related to the question about baseline use, too. Because if you have been a responsible person and already updated all of your appliances, then you have no place to go. If you have not done this, then you have reserved water. So there's an interesting perverse incentive built in there.
So just to follow up, I mean, my thinking on this is that, you know, if it were simply a requirement versus an identification of where your baseline is and what you've done, you know, that would be, I think, an easy way to comply with what the Coastal Commission is asking, right? Like, you know, in these water constrained areas, you know, measures will be taken by the applicant by installing water-saving devices, low-flow toilets, et cetera. I mean, it's real. It is measurable what you save in terms of your water use by doing that. But the whole idea of water neutrality, I mean, what people are going to change what they're using in their current home, I guess you could. We do that to make an ADU in the Cal-Am service area now. We change all, if we haven't done so yet, you would change all of your fixtures to low-flow fixtures, and then you'd create the credits that you need to build the ADU. So if that's what they're asking, I guess that would make sense. I'm just, I'm just trying to understand how we can do this in a way that ends up being feasible for the individual that wants to build an ADU. And that's all I've got.
Just to answer somewhat, page two of the Coastal Commission letter does specify replacing with native drought-tolerant landscaping, removing pools, on larger properties, runoff catchment systems. I think that's what they're envisioning, those types of measures being required.
Okay.
To reach water neutrality.
Perfect. And it seems doable.
Well, yeah, unless you have already done all that, in which case you've got no place to go.
Through the chair, that's why I'm suggesting that it would be for the ADU also, that, I mean, if you're, if you're going to build an ADU and the requirement would be that you use these devices versus the water neutrality, which would only be available to certain people who haven't done the water saving. I'm just trying to think of something that is less, that's more flexible, but that actually does, you know, truly make a difference. Even if you've already done it in the rest of your house, if you build a unit with water-saving devices, you save money. I mean, you save water, not money. I mean, you save water. So...
But not over, you don't build it.
You won't achieve water neutrality, but there's still an overarching goal here to provide the opportunity to build units, to build ADUs. I guess I'll dive a little bit deeper into this. I do not agree necessarily with this idea that the building of ADUs is not going to create affordable housing units. I think these are affordable by design. Not everyone will rent them. That's a reality. But there is a correlation in my mind between increasing rental stock and ultimately reducing the cost of housing in this area. And we've had this conversation on many fronts when we were doing the housing element, and now with ADU law, that, you know, we have grown in population by a certain number. We've built a certain number of units in California, and we have a deficit. So this ADU law, this state law, is an attempt to try to narrow that gap. And is it going to be perfect in every instance? No, but we are creating stock. And ultimately, I think that's going to have a long-term benefit. So I guess my comments are coming from a place of where we can make this work in North County. I am eager to see us do that.
Commissioner Mendoza, were you also wanting to comment?
Yes. In reference to water savings, after the levy break, a lot of those toilets and everything else got replaced to low-usage fixtures and everything else. So North Monterey County, the Parho area, after the levy break, most of the ball got redone. So where did we show the positive water that we're saving just off of those changes that we already have done? And I don't know if that's taken into consideration as well.
Yeah, thanks. Thank you for that. I guess, you want to, does staff want to comment on any of that? Because I have one more suggestion in the North County area and generally. Staff? No, I just, back to the contention in the fans' letter, that we don't have any expectation that the provision of ADUs will provide affordable housing. Well, first off, I've been beat over the head about the market theory for so long. It seems too bad you can't ever use it when you want to do something, as opposed to when you don't want to do something. But setting that aside, we did propose in Big Sur a longer period, the 90 days or fewer, which we felt in the ad hoc committee might encourage these units to be used for long-term renters, which would, in fact, we also believed, help keep the rental prices down. I'm wondering if that might be considered in other areas as well as a way to try to continue to direct these as for long-term residents, rather than any kind of shorter, more transitory, and usually more expensive dwellings. Anyway, just, just a thought. Are we done with North County? Commissioner Mendoza is nodding his head, so I'll take that as a yes. Staff?
No, I think we heard a lot of good thoughts, good feedback, good questions. Staff ourselves have been chatting with a bunch of thoughts and questions. So we're well aware we're going to take a little time and revisit, kind of in the context of all of this, again, with the end goal of seeing where and how we can appropriately get ADUs as a means to increase housing, in this case in North County, as appropriate.
Was there additional presentation, Mr. Sanchez?
No, that was, that was the final presentation.
Got it. All right. Any more comments generally from the commission before we go to the public? Not seeing any. I'm going to go ahead and open public comment on this item. To those of you who've been patiently waiting in the chambers, was this what you would like to speak about? If so, come on, fall down, and I'll give you three minutes each. Welcome.
Thank you. Good morning. My name is Rick Diaz. I'm a trustee for North Monterey County Unified and previous appointed commissioner for the parks by Supervisor Church, resident of Prundale, and now Castroville for 48 years. I have a family of six, plus a grandmother-in-law living in my small house on Cypress Street, built in the 50s, so it's small. Last night, the city of Salinas passed a historic rent stabilization ordinance because the constituency organized and made their voices heard to the city. While the constituency is speaking volumes right now about ADUs in North County, some not may be able to make it here or on Zoom. Some don't know where to write to. They are working, working to be able to afford the top five most expensive rent or mortgage in America. I grew up in Prundale. Our neighbors are far away from each other, most of them. It makes sense to have ADUs. In our district, our student homeless percentage is high. People living in cars and RVs because they can't afford housing here. It was mentioned that agriculture, they, I attend meetings for the groundwater, and they use 91% of all water in Monterey County, 96 of which is, percent of which is groundwater. And other things that haven't been mentioned about conservation are methods like gray water capture and rainwater capture. And local elected officials are definitely in favor of ADUs. Please adopt a resolution recommending that the Board of Supervisors amend the North County land use plan to add policies regarding ADUs. It's phenomenally better for everyone to be permitted than unpermitted. Thank you all for your hard work, working to help our county better. Thank you.
And thank you for your comments. We don't do applause here for, for the reasons I always opine on. We want to make sure it's a welcoming place for any opinion. So thank you very much. If you'd like to comment yourselves, please come on forward.
Thank you. I appreciate the opportunity to come back. I know I've been here. This is my third time here. My name is Martha Chavaria. I'm a North County resident, also president of North Monterey County Lulac, which you guys, I think everyone received the letter back several, several months ago. As I mentioned, you know, we've been following this issue back since January. So I am very excited that we're here today, and I really appreciate the dialogue that took place earlier today. I really appreciate all the hard work and the collaboration that the planning department and the Coastal Commission have been having. I'm not going to reiterate some of the things that, you know, Mr. Diaz just mentioned, but that's why we're here today, because of the socioeconomic impacts that it's making in our community. And you're all well aware of our population and the demographics and the unsafe housing that is currently taking place. And this is why we want to make affordable housing. But I appreciate, you know, the dialogue Mr. Mendoza mentioned, and making it a fair, equitable for all. You know, it should be site-specific, you know, with those regulations, because I understand there's a lot of requirements and guidelines that the Coastal Commission is making. It has been brought up in the past before. I hope we can meet common ground to be able to push this forward in a timely fashion. I appreciate the timeline that you guys offered, you know, and how it needs to proceed. But ultimately, I see it goes to the Coastal Commission for certification. So we have to be able to make common ground. I just want it to be fair and equitable and affordable, because the connection and the, and that this affordable housing for ADUs in North County to keep families together, especially for children that can't afford to live, they want to stay close to their families, and building ADUs will allow that. Instead of them being congested in one household, I've spoken to many families in our community regarding this issue, and that's what they're facing. And they're not educated and understand all of these criterias and regulations. And so let's make it affordable. You know, I heard about the septic, I heard about the water situations. Let's just make sure that it's feasible and affordable for our families in North Monterey County can be able to have a nice residential home in North County. I just want to say that the exceptions, I know I only have 48 minutes, the exception for the permit process, I wanted clarification. The $1,000 square footage that you were discussing, does that mean that we don't have to get a coastal permit? Is that your recommendation, if it's less than 1,000 square footage?
I'll allow you to answer if it's a quick answer, Ms. Bredy.
It will depend on the circumstance. It would depend on the circumstance, because there are other regulations if, that could trigger a requirement for coastal permit that's not just the ADU. And it could be refined where that would be limited only to, only to attached. So it'll get refined, but our goal is to get to a category that perhaps could not, would not require additional coastal permitting, as long as other triggers didn't occur.
Thank you for that clarification. That would be huge, because that is the setback lots of residents are facing. And if you could allow someone to build a 999,000 square-foot home and not have to get a coastal permit, would be amazing. So thank you.
Thank you for your comments. We don't usually allow staff to answer back, but I think in this case it seemed appropriate. Come on down. Welcome.
I want to thank everyone in the process, and I know this has been a lot of work. My name is Jessica Yala, and I live in rural North Monterey County, 325 Mayhur Road. It's my understanding that approvals of the ADUs have been consistently denied for the past three decades. A surprising discovery to me is I recently purchased a home within this vicinity. It's imperative to change and modernize this ordinance. This would be providing our community with opportunities comparable to those of the larger Monterey County, thereby enriching our quality of life and property values. Families can stay together and stay connected. Moveaways will no longer be a part of the discussion. This allows our upcoming baby boomers to stay on properties with loved ones that will be blossoming into the area where they will need care. This will also bring generational wealth. So please approve this antiquated ordinance. I also want to bring to light that Monterey Mushrooms and Royal Oaks will be closing its permanent doors this, the end of this year. They farm over 300 acres of mushrooms in this area, and I believe that this will free up a lot of water. How much water, we'd have to, I'm assuming, ask Environmental to see if they have a record of the water that they are no longer will be using. And this water can be allocated and be used within these accessory dwelling units. So please consider this as a, as one door closes is another door that opens for opportunity for the community. It's a very bittersweet segment that they will be closing, because they've been a part of our community for so long. But the community would thrive with this water allocations. Thank you, and please approve it. Thank you.
Thank you for your thoughts. Come on down. Don't be shy. Welcome.
Thank you. A resident of North County, specifically Royal Oaks, also grew up in Castroville. So I've been in the area for a long time. And I just want to thank you guys for the conversation you just had, because it means a lot to us. I had something written out, but then my phone just died, the battery. So I'll just go off the top of my head. But just wanted to point out that being in the area and seeing just the amount of people in the population increasing over the years, when you see kids coming up, like the school buses, and you go see the properties and the neighbors that have essentially created little villages for people to live in, like, this already exists. So it's a difference between making it so that it's healthy and safe for people to live in versus what it currently is, which is a bunch of makeshift sheds and RVs that are all piled up together and people living in cramped spaces. With, God knows if they have sufficient facilities for them to use restrooms and cook and all that stuff. So what it currently is, is not good. So this really expedites that. And my hope is that, you know, you have the amazing talent to make it happen as soon as possible to support, I think of the kids. I mean, it's entire family is living in these, in these units. So whatever you can do to expedite the process is very appreciated. And thanks again for this conversation. I know all your hearts are aligned in the right place. So that means a lot to the community that it's impacted by this. Thank you.
Thank you. Would you care to give your name for the record?
Oh, yeah. Annalusa Cebedo.
Thank you. And anyone else? Come on.
Hi. My name's Adi Rengal. I'm also from North County, and I appreciate everybody's dialogue. It was very informative. I just want to get by to that we don't go back and forth with the Coastal Commission. This water reducing, the water neutrality, how does that work when people take off these RVs or campers that they're living in, just to get the ADU, and then they come back on? There's people that are families already living there, and all they want to do is expand, so they're not encroaching on their elderly parents with these kids that are screaming. And they've got dementia, you know, they've got a certain level of care that they have to have. So that's kind of where I'm at. I'm at the question for water neutrality. What do we do so the Coastal Commission doesn't kick it back to us? What specific, that's so general to me, and it almost feels like it's stonewalling North County again. What is, just be specific. What do you need from us, so we can be in compliance? And how can we do it so that it can be affordable to these boomers that are retiring, living on social security, whose kids are having to, you know, commute or relocate and, you know, on a fixed income as well, to live with their aging parents? They don't want to all be in the same crowded house, you know? So, yeah. What do we do? Give away one restroom for another restroom, you know? Everything's high efficient, like Mr. Mendoza said. Everything's already high efficient. Everything's already been switched out. So where do we go from there? But yes, that's where I want. I just want to see that there's clarification, that we can move forward, that, you know, he, the Coastal Commission... he, the Coastal Commission was so vague. Water neutrality, okay, so we give up a pool. Not everybody in North County, it's so cold here. Who all has pools to give up? Yeah. So, that's where I'm at. That's the question that I want to see, you know, that they don't stonewall us back. You know, it seems like we're trying to move forward, but then in, you know, nighttime or day before, they're saying, oh, no, still don't meet the requirements. But yet, other communities are progressing. And that's the frustration that I have as a North County resident. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Does anybody else in the chambers wish to speak? Seeing none, let's go online. Madam Clerk?
Yes, we have Margie Kay. I'm gonna ask, oh. I'm gonna ask you to unmute. Sorry, it looks like I accidentally remuted you.
Hello. Thank you. I am from North County also, and I've been following the water situation in the Paharo Valley and Salinas Valley for a good 40, 50 years. And I just want to remind Commissioner Mendoza that many of us are on septic tanks. We don't have sewer capabilities. The Paharo Sanitation District that flows into the Watsonville Waste Water Treatment Plant isn't an option for many people, nor is there anything in the Salinas Valley water area. So, we're on septic tanks, and we also, many of us are on private wells or mutual wells. So, there is many problems over the years with wells. There's not a lot of projects to, to supply new water. One thing that I would like to, and not, excuse me, I'm, I'm talking off the top of my head here. The, um, what I would suggest, if there is going to be a net neutrality on water and with, with changing out landscaping, is to have a deed restriction. It's amazing how many people change, how properties change hands. People don't know necessarily what agreements were made with the county unless there's deed restrictions written into the property. So, that's what I would suggest if there's going to be some kind of a net neutrality on water with changing out the landscaping. I do agree with you, Madam Chair, on how food production, hopefully it would be on drip irrigation and maybe using water catchment from their roofs and stuff for, for doing that, for irrigation on that. And there was, we're still operating under the 1982 plan for the North County coastal area, 1982. It was a good plan. There's still, there's need for update on it, and that's what I want to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Kay. Madam Clerk?
Adam Pinterest?
Good morning, staff and members of the Commission. Thank you all for your diligence and time in considering this matter. My name is Adam Pinterest. I represent the Monterey County Association of Realtors. And I'll just echo and, and agree with some of the comments I've heard, particularly from Commissioner Daniels. We do have a housing crisis, and this does not solve that problem, but it's a step in the right direction. This isn't the perfect policy, but anything that streamlines our ADU permitting and approval process is at least a step in the right direction. And so, I would urge you to move forward with everything you can do to streamline ADU policies, and in particular, to make sure that it's in accordance with state law, and so that it doesn't get kicked back to the Coastal Commission. Property owners should not be stuck between different government agencies and bodies. There should be a clear set of guidelines and a pathway to approval for qualifying properties. So, thank you for all the hard work you're doing, and have a great day.
And thank you very much for your comments. Madam Clerk, is there anyone else wishing to speak?
No, and there are no new emails.
Very well. Thank you. If that being the case, I'm going to go ahead and close the public comment period and bring it back to the Commission. Commissioners? Commissioner Daniels?
I guess my question would be, where are we at? So, it does, is this a situation that staff feels like you've gotten feedback and you will be going to the board once, having addressed the feedback that we've given today? Or is this a situation where potentially this would come back to the Planning Commission with some of the, the requests that have been made for, by the Planning Commission that you've stated you're still fleshing out?
That's really at the discretion of the Commission. If you would like to give us direction to return, or if you'd like to recommend that we carry it forward, address the issues before presenting it to the board. So, that's really at your discretion. If I may, I think one thing I did want to just also clarify, because I know we note that state law has changed. I believe we've had ADU state law change three times in the last four years. And so, we did want to clarify, these regulations are in the coast, are for coastal zone. So, there are some unique challenges and, that we need to address to reconcile state housing law with the coastal zone. We also do intend to return at a later date, particularly once we get these regulations through state housing community development review and hopefully adopted by the Coastal Commission, where we would then update our inland regulations so accordingly. So, I did also want to clarify that we're, we do have some updating in, in all of our regulations, including the inland areas because state law has, has updated subsequent.
Thank you. Anybody else on the Commission? I guess I'm hesitant to say take it forward and address the concerns until we're able to figure out what outcomes we're after. It, this leaves the decision-making of the outcomes to staff, which seems kind of like a big burden for people who have enough to do. Couple of things that I would like to, to suggest. North County appears to be the most complex, most, most, I don't, I guess, convoluted series of comments from the Coastal Commission, certainly. Is there an opportunity here? We delineated the areas for them that require parking. You know, you have to have parking on site in Carmel. So, we have a map that says in these areas, you have to do that. Is there a way in North County to delineate areas where these concerns of the Coastal Commission would not be applicable? For example, if the water supply is from Paharo Sunny Mesa or Cal Water, and they can get a Cal, you know, that's, that's not a problem. We don't have to ask them to do that. Or where there is sewer, or where there's a concentration that we want to address. And I think that, that saying that, that it would be kind of helpful for people's expectations if they knew if they were in an area or not that required some things or not. It might also prevent the Coastal Commission from feeling they need to regulate to the least common denominator. Because there are going to be some areas that are obviously going to be of more concern to them with respect to other coastal resource considerations. If we could make that area as small as possible, that might help a good deal. And I guess I just want a reminder, because the public comment has been so eloquent on this, and it, and it applies to our discussion of fires too. I'd like for everybody to keep in mind what the no project alternative is. If we don't do this, if we don't allow some kind of outlet for people to, to build something that we think is safe and healthy, we're saying that you have to do it in an unsafe and unhealthy way that we're not controlling. And so, the standard, I think, needs to be modified to some extent by not, is this what we would like it to be, but is this better than what we have now? And that's been a constant throughout permitting here with respect especially to the things like this and the things like housing density requirements, things like fire rebuilds, where people are, are being forced outside of any regulatory environment to do things that are, that are absolutely not only undesirable for the body, body at large, but unsafe for them. And so, as we've heard again today, and I want to thank everyone for bringing those concerns forward, we really need to temper in all respects and in all of our departments, whether we are asking people to do something that's unachievable, meaning that they have to live in, in a situation which is worse. Is it worse for someone to be unhoused than it is for them to live in something that's not as good as we wish it could be? And to try to separate concerns about liability from concerns about public self and hate, self, health and safety, I can't even speak today. So, I would not be comfortable in providing staff with, I don't, I'm not prepared because I haven't, didn't really have a chance to think through what the Coastal Commission or the other letter was, to provide staff with a firm sense of what I would like the outcomes of their alterations to be. Because it's not just to placate the Coastal Commission. It's not like just do whatever they say so we can get it through. That would not be what I would advocate for. And so, that means it's a more nuanced approach. So, I would advocate that we come back, as much as I hate to slow anything down, unless we're facing a statutory timeline that we really can't do that. That would be my preference. Commissioner Mendoza?
Thank you, Commissioner Deal. One of the concerns I have, obviously I have several, but, and a few that I would like to try to address now. Like it was mentioned that Monterey Mushrooms is shutting down. We have another mushroom facility that on, that shut down on Hall Road probably about three years ago. We have a salad company that only operates six months out of the year. We have a power plant that shut down that doesn't use any water whatsoever that we've turned into a battery facility for storage. So, I don't, I don't believe that the concern that we're getting from the Coastal Commission is adequate. And furthermore, I don't think that North Monterey County is the only area in this big of a county we have that's got water issues. But yet, at the same time, it seems like North Monterey County seems to be singled out just because they have jurisdiction and it's coastal. So, I would like for us to go back and really take a look at it and find out how they're coming up with these conclusions that North Monterey County seems to have every deficiency there is to have. And, and I don't think that's the case. And, and we need to have answers on why they feel this way, why they feel that we have this water shortage that, that they claim we have. And just like one of the speakers earlier, which is not the ones that we have here, was mentioning that most of the people are in septic system. That is not correct. Los Lomas and Paharo are on city sewage. It goes into Watsonville. The same thing with water. We get our water from Wat, uh, Paharo Sunny Mesa, provides the water for the Paharo area, and we have Cal Water in the Los Lomas area. So, these are all things that we need to address and we need to take a look at, but we need to find out where the Coastal Commission is coming from. The other thing, we were talking about the parking, offsite parking in the Carmel scenic area. I, I don't think that's the only scenic area in Monterey County. You have, you know, there's some beautiful places. I wish you'd all come down to Moss Landy. There's some beautiful places that have really good scenic areas. But yet, why was that not put on there? So, so I, I just do not agree with, with their concerns. And I think that we can either agree with them and just take the path of the resistance and do whatever they want us to do, or we can challenge them, wait a minute, where are you coming from? How come you have these concerns that we have a water shortage in North Monterey County? And, and it has to be valid. I mean, you have, they have to prove to us what they're telling us that their concern is. And if they don't, then, you know, we have to take it a step further because it's been just way too long that North Monterey County gets neglected like that and always get, we, I feel like we get singled out. Everything goes to everybody else, but North Monterey County, we always have issues. And, and it's time for, to get, to get some, some resolve out there and start making things better for us. And, you know, we, we have other issues out there, but yet, every time you call, you're asking anybody for, for anything for Monterey County while you, oh, you know, call here, call there, do this, do that. But yet, we, we feel like we're orphans, and we should not feel that way. We're part of the county. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you for the heartfelt remarks. I would, I'm not as familiar with it as I should be, but I would really suggest that a place to start, as you bring these, these ideas forward as to what needs to be addressed, would be a careful reading of your land use plan. I think a number of these issues are included in your certified local coastal plan, and that if, in order for us to address them, that would be a good, be sure that we don't have that in there already in the documents that are on the record so that we have the chance to address them. So, just having been through this process with, with Big Sur, it's a great eye-opener to go carefully through your land use plan and see what was enshrined in 1982 that might specifically need to be addressed to address your concerns. Just in terms of a, of a course of action, something that you could bring forward and put in a referral and we could actually do, that might be a place to start. Yes, Commissioner Mendoza?
Commissioner Deal, in 1982, things were completely different than they are today. And I agree with you. Maybe it's time that we need to, you know, take a second look at the land use plan, find out what we need to do to change it, to, to bring it up to date. And I know that we've had meetings in the past, but, but I, it's, it's 1982's a long time. I mean, I was 11. If that means anything. Thank you.
No, I understand. I'm just saying that for staff, they have to abide by the law that's on the books. And the local coastal plan on the books is what we got. And so, that's a place to start for specific changes. Rather than saying we need to update it, we could say this, but this particular thing is in the way. So, let's fix that thing. And it would be something that I think we found from the Big Sur experience, if it comes from the community, if people can identify a particular problem, and then you as the Planning Commissioner are in a great position to look and see how that's in the rules. So, we could then make a recommendation to look at changing the rule rather than, oh my gosh, the plan is out of date, we got to update the plan because we know how that goes. It doesn't happen quickly. So, is it just, it's just my thought. I don't even know if it would work, but it's something that you can do and might help, might not, but might help. Anyway, sorry. I've been talking all day, and I should really not have. But no, it's a, it, I, I feel the passion and really applaud it. I do. Anybody else waiting? Commissioner Daniels?
So, if it turns out that we are coming back in light with, of what Commissioner Deal said, one of the entities that would be nice to have on hand, just, you know, even if it's via Zoom that could answer questions next time, would be the GSA. You know, I don't think that these basins are, are in critical overdraft like other basins in the, in the county. So, it's obviously something that's in the, in the land use plan that has something to do with water quality or something else. And so, also just being able to share with us a little more, whatever section that is in the land use plan that the Coastal Commission's clearly hanging their hat on. And so, that would be really helpful. And, and then, you know, coming back with, sorry, I can't get to my notes, but there, the suggestion that Commissioner Deal made, that perhaps when we come back, there is a possibility of responding to the Coastal Commission with sort of sections of North County that don't have the same issues as the areas that are, are, are of concern to the California Coastal Commission. And then, just want to reiterate that, you know, I'm fine with all of the other things that we've addressed today outside of North County, and everything that was presented by Mr. Sanchez is, I think, great. And even the parking requirement's fine, you know, that's, you know, it's a heavily trafficked area. And if that's going to satisfy a concern that the Coastal Commission has and allow us to move forward, that, that seems fine as well. But when you do come back, I just think the GSA, you know, even if their projects are just part of a plan and they're at some point in the future, it just might be helpful to have someone on Zoom to answer questions, since we are stating in this staff report that we are relying on the studies that the GSA has actually done. That'd be a good, good person to include.
Anything else from the Commission? Because we need an action at some point. Staff, would you like to, given what you've heard, what would you suggest for an action?
I mean, I think generally what we've heard is support for the ordinances as they've been presented, with some typos and corrections that, so I think staff can, can, the pieces that we can more readily address. I think for North County, what I'm hearing is generally a consensus that we would like as a county to kind of work, but, but push back a little bit on the Coastal Commission to find a way that we can make, can make ADUs workable. I think some of the, some of the, you know, we've been in a situation of off-limits development up until now.
up until now, where staff was trying to land is relying on the change in state law and relying on the groundwater sustainability agencies to implement the plans, to balance the basins, and supporting that with conservation measures versus kind of this approach that gets more at a net neutrality that Coastal Commission. So what staff is hearing is that for returning, we will meet, on the North County, we'll meet with Coastal Commission staff, we'll see if we can find a merging of kind of what's being requested with, kind of where staff is leaning towards being, to make this workable. It may look like coming back with two alternatives for the Planning Commission if we aren't able to come to. I think one of our, I think it's kind of an approach difference, and I think what we're hearing is that we would like to come back with the staff recommendation, but identify if where staff lands and our recommendation may still be different from the approach that Coastal Commission staff is requesting, but if so, for what reasons? And part of that would be also bringing GSA staff to inform, to potentially inform that. I did on one, I did want to, I don't know if it's valuable also, because we are talking about coastal zone, North County, if it's valuable to just remind folks the area of North County that the Coastal Commission comments, and this really applies to, you know, it is that strip, it's through Moth Landing to north, but there's also the very large swath that goes inland at the Elkhorn Slough, Las Lomas, Las Lomas community area, and Perndale, that very large swath that goes inland for coastal zone. The remainder of North County is inland, and so the Coastal Commission discussion is not applicable necessarily. Water's still a concern, but that balancing with Coastal Commission would not be applicable to those remaining areas of the inland North County.
I just want to add procedurally, too, we're getting these comments from Coastal Commission staff, so it's completely within the Planning Commission and the Board of Supervisors' discretion to move this forward and have a hearing with the Coastal Commission, who would make a decision on this. Staff isn't the end-all, be-all decision-maker, so, for what that's worth.
Always a good reminder, thank you. Anybody? Commissioner Daniels?
In light of the comment that was just made, I just want to add, and I'm happy to make this as a motion, I don't even necessarily need two alternatives, it's just addressing the concerns, and if that, addressing the concerns means a firm response to the Coastal Commission that is perhaps different from what they're suggesting, but it's what the county believes is the right path, is completely okay with me. So I just, I think when we come back, I would rather see us have an opinion, and know what we're doing, and know what we're moving forward to the Board of Supervisors, whether or not it's 100% in alignment. I just want it to be clear and attainable by community members to be able to move forward. And then, just to reiterate what was just stated, again, this is staff, and ultimately this will go before the Coastal Commission, which is different. So I'm happy to make a motion that we return, but is there a potential for a date certain? Is there, I don't want to see this delayed.
If you just give staff one minute?
Absolutely.
Calendar's coming up.
I think we only have four more meetings this year, so.
And I'm open to input from my colleagues if this is, one usually.
Yes, while they're looking, I just want to keep saying that my hope is that we can make sure the Coastal Commission identifies the goal to try to correct existing problems. It's not to add more density, it's to manage the density that we already have. And it's kind of an idea that is hard for them to often grapple with, but it's just so important to what my opinion is on this particular set of matters.
So through the chair, I think if you wanted us to look at a date certain return, I am looking at the November 13 meeting. There is some availability on that date. It gives staff about a month to go through, make the edits, consult with Coastal Commission, and kind of determine where we may land and what refinements, if any, we may be recommending to come back. So I think that's a fair, it would keep us moving forward, bring it back, and in a reasonable amount of time. So I believe that staff could commit to November 13 if the Commission is amenable to that.
And through the chair, would you still make the meeting at the Board of Supervisors that you were scheduled for? Was that a December meeting with the Board?
No, we hadn't scheduled definitively yet with the Coastal, or with the Board of Supervisors, because we did want to see where the Commission landed.
So there wasn't a calendar for the Board yet?
No, so what I would anticipate is if we're returning, and the assumption is that we'll be returning with an ordinance, that the Commission would be hopefully comfortable with then recommending to the Board of Supervisors. I would anticipate that we would then be moving forward to the Board just after the first of the year, at the most reasonably available calendar date.
Would the maker of the motion accept the November 13 suggestion for a date certain?
I will accept the November 13.
Is there a second for that motion? Commissioner Mendoza, would you second that motion? It's been moved by Commissioner Daniels, seconded by Commissioner Mendoza, that we continue the assignment to a date certain of November 13 for the reasons articulated at this hearing. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, I'm going to go ahead and call for the vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no, and that motion carries. And I really want to just thank all the members of the public who have been so persistent throughout this. I really appreciate the sense that someone from the public is following what we're doing. It's kind of gratifying. All right. That being said, that brings us to other matters, and I don't know if you would like to handle that, or if Ms. Moretti does, she can do it from the desk down there, as far as I'm concerned. Do we have any other matters?
My brain's still in ADU land. I don't, I apologize, I don't have any other matters that I had planned. Oh, I think the, I'm sorry, if this is a repeat, I do try to report out from what actions happened at the Board since you all last met. There was a project that had been recommended for denial and was appealed. It was, the project name, I don't have the PLM, was Flores. It was a project in the Toro land use plan area that involved development for a single-family home with additional structures on a ridgeline. The recommendation from Planning Commission was denial. That was appealed, went before the Board, and the Board concurred with the denial, and the project has been denied. And I apologize, I don't have any other, but I'll catch you up next time if I missed.
Okay, then. Is it, do you have an additional department report? Nothing? Not today?
No, we'll let that stand, doesn't it?
Thank you. Unless there's additional matters, I'm going to go ahead and adjourn the meeting at 12:10 PM. Thank you, everybody.